Roll call, please.
Yes.
You back there, Weston?
Councilmember Wirick.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Haney.
Here.
Mayor Stix.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you, Weston, and welcome, everyone, to the October 25th, 2022, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Mayor Pro Tem, will you please say the pledge?
Sure. Still getting over the shock of Gail changing her voice. Please place your right hand over your heart. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. Approval of the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Tonight, we have a presentation by Chris Stanch. Thank you, Chris, for filling in for Andy Spirka regarding the Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative.
Good evening. Filling in on short notice for Mr. Spirka from the RCD. I believe we have a small show.
Yes, we do, and James Hahn is pulling that up now.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll see what Andy wanted to say. Okay. This is introduced, which you've already heard about on a number of occasions, but the collaborative is now making an effort around the county to introduce the collaborative and move forward. This is part of that process. So, back in April of last year, the Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative was formed. It was the founding members of the collaborative is the Ventura County Resource Conservation District, which is also its manager, the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council, the Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council, Bell Canyon Fire Safe Council, and our private industry partner, Jensen Hughes, which is a fire safety engineering firm. And we formed it for a number of reasons, but one of those, of course, was to take a look at funding opportunities that come and see what worked best as a collaborative approach.
They can't hear back there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's not you. I think James is already talking.
Yeah, we can hear you up here, but just not back there.
It's a rare moment when someone says they can't hear me, just so you know. Usually, if we keep it down, that's the usual response to my talking.
Yeah, I think James is taking a look at it.
Technical.
That's why he's gone.
That's why he's gone. Well, I'm a patient man.
Your three minutes is up.
I don't think those rules apply in a presentation.
Perhaps try the audio again?
Try again? Is it working now?
You guys hear the sound?
You hear now? Well, where I left off was, if you guys didn't hear the initial part of this, it was that Ventura County Wildfire Collaborative, which I'll call the Collaborative from here on out, was formed last year, and we have already engaged in fundraising, and we have been successful at that so far. But we did it not just to look at funding and whether it's good to leverage the collaborative, but looking at, you know, regional countywide coordination and cooperation on how we do things, because so much of what goes on, you know, no one wants to have, when someone does something over here, we can learn from that and use it over here. So, it opens up a platform of sharing our expertise and our experience and our lessons learned. The mission is, as you can see on the thing, is to establish a countywide collaborative approach to design, implement, maintain a holistic wildfire resilient strategy that builds individual, local, regional capacities to better prepare for, prevent, mitigate, respond to, and recover from potential wildfire threats for Ventura County neighborhoods and communities located in the wildland urban interface now and in the future. That's a mouthful. So, what we've done to begin with is we currently have six projects running. You guys have heard about these projects before in our presentations for the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council. And there are six projects. Each, we manage two of those. The Ventura RCD manages two, and Ventura Regional Fire Safe Council manages two. But there's a great deal of overlap to those projects, and a lot of sharing of information and data goes on. Project one is to update the Ventura County Community Wildfire Protection Plan. That was first prepared and only prepared by the Ojai Valley Fire Safe Council back in 2010, and has not been updated. So, that's a multi-year process to update that, and looking at that countywide CWPP being principally a coordinating document. We have a education campaign, which is being managed by the RCD, and that is being manifested now through a series of town halls, presentations, and workshops throughout the county over the next two years. Our first effort was to bring cities together in Camarillo a couple of months ago. I think Ojai was there, to talk about what do the cities need as we show up in their area? What, and give us information. We've actually received quite a bit of feedback on that from cities that say, we want these issues addressed in these town halls. So, those are starting now. Ojai is scheduled for mid next year to come out. And then, we have the standardized home hardening program. You've heard about that. You've heard the liaison that is in town from Ventura Regional, Natasha Speake, here. We're participating in that as well. We got a grant from the city, which we thank you for, to help us support that program. It has another feature to it that we're taking over as well. It has to do with a risk scoring tool and insurance involvement, which we won't talk about tonight. Then, we are managing projects four and five. That's the fine-scale risk mapping and the digital dashboard. And then, we also have the wildfire vulnerability evacuation assessment. There's an offshoot of that where we're doing a countywide EmberCast mapping and modeling project that's being funded by Ventura County directly. And then, we have the project six, which is RCD, and that's this wildfire summit. That's in November of next year. It's a statewide summit being put on. It's a three-day event, and that's going to prove to be, I think, very interesting, and that is now being planned and put together for next year. It's going to be a large event. Next slide? Well, here they are. So, we just go through the same, I'm going to repeat these projects. I guess I know them too well as it is. Next slide? Next slide? Now, these are, these projects here, because I, because we're doing, this is the ones that are related. They're being used to form a data foundation for the, our Ojai Valley Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which you guys also gave a grant towards, which is also being funded by the state's Fire Assistance Grant from the USDA. And so, one of the reasons we couldn't start the CWPP was because these had to get going first, and we had to wait on this for funding from Cal Fire, because these inform the CWPP. So, it's going to be, this is an unusual amount of effort for a CWP covering this area. So, it should be extremely robust. Next? So, the question is, what can the wildfire collaborative do for cities? One is that we can help secure funding. Things come along. We all have grant writers. We all do these things. We've already, since April of last year, raised over $5 million, and we expect that to continue to improve. We're also doing the regional coordination and connections. One of the projects that we've started is what's called a countywide coordinating group, wildfire coordinating group, which is fashioned somewhat after the National Wildfire Coordinating Group, which gives us the national strategy, which you refer to in every grant you write. And that is drawing the cities and nonprofits and other community stakeholders into a council that looks at these things countywide. It's not a funding mechanism, but it's a way of looking at, how do we all work together, and extending outside the county as well? Because we work with Santa Barbara, Santa Monica, et cetera. And then, we also can bring to light, because of our experience with everybody, bring to light people, this particular city's needs and work on those. And, of course, we through, we work with the regulators and the funders on this. And we are constantly engaging in community engagement, and we're constantly refining the issues about how do we address this? So, there's always a lot of talk. It's always, we're going to do this, and there's a million things that could be proposed. And we can help sort of focus that and prioritize it based upon what we're doing and all the input from our stakeholders that we then look at. So, it's kind of a, as says here, to calm the noise and get focused on what we have to do. And then, because we are comprised of small nonprofits, we're lean and mean, and we get done, things done very quickly, and we are nimble. And so, we can act to get funding opportunities together in a manner that would be very difficult for a city or county to do on its own. So, we're looking here to assist our individual cities and individual areas of the county, and that is what we are doing. And with that, I welcome any questions about the collaborative.
Just, I want to say thank you, Chris, for jumping in for Andy, and much appreciated for all your work collaborating. And we're excited to have a workshop. That'll be really, in the fall or early winter, maybe?
I think it was spring of 2023.
I think it's spring of 2023. We, we had to go through all those cities, like who, when can we do this? Right, everybody's placing. Oh, I was pretty flexible, but some people, some cities weren't very flexible. So, we had to sort of narrow it down.
Spring of 2023. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. And thank you for your attention. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Any commission reports, James?
No, Mayor.
Okay. All right. We will move on to public communication, and just a reminder, these are items that are not on the agenda, and so, we cannot discuss them. And we will, normally, public comment is three minutes. So, make sure that when you hear the chime, if you could, stop talking, just to be fair. So, let's begin with Leslie Rule, then Catherine Donwin, and then Larry Steingold.
Thank you. This story starts back in the day. No doubt, a hot and humid day. New Orleans, early 50s. Two girls met first day of high school, best friends ever since. These two girls, Von Dall Golden and Bootsy Rule, both married soon after high school graduation, as was the southern way back then. Von Dall married Bill, stayed in New Orleans, and had Lydia Golden a year later. Bootsy married Bob, landed in San Francisco, and had Leslie Rule. Fast forward to 2022, and Bootsy, Bootsy and Von Dall are still best friends. And best friends have begot best friends. I am Leslie, daughter of Bootsy, and some of you may know Lydia Golden, daughter of I'm the Mama Von Dall. The first time I came to Ojai 30 years ago was for Lydia Golden's wedding to a local guy, Brock Bernstein. Most years since then, I have visited in the summer and for New Year's. Lydia is my son's godmother, and she has loved and loves him so much as I do her son, Lason Bernstein. Her brother, Gray Golden, and his two girls, Nona and Nicole, the Golden Girls, also live here and are my family. I am their auntie, and they are my beloved. We have marched in your July 4th parades under Jane Goodall's Chutes and Roots banner. We were some of the first kids to skate at the skate park and splash at the water park. We went to the Renaissance, we went to a Renaissance-themed wedding in the East End, Orange Grove. We have supported many, many school fundraisers. Come New Year's Eve, we'd sit around a fire, call in all the good for the next year, and send out all the trials and tribulations of the past year. Then, we would howl at the moon. We would join and be led by Lydia's dog, Rosie. We were, as time immemorial, people, fire, wolves. We still howl at the moon, and as we have done for almost 30 years. It is who we are, but it is also a remembrance of who we were. One of my favorite memories is coming back from the beach. I think it was late afternoon, and there was a horse and a carriage. Do you remember the horse and the carriage? I think it came up Canada and hang, and hung a ride on summer. Well, my dog Bella jumped out of the car and went chasing the horse. Lydia and I, in our bathing suits, went running down the street yelling, Bella, Bella, stop, come back! She's just about to reach the clip clop of the horse's hooves when she gets a big old poopy dumped on her head. Guess the horse did not like being chased. That story has become lore in our families. The point of this is all to say, Ojai is embedded in my memories and in my heart. It is who I am. And when I retired here, as I had always planned to, I felt the obligation to contribute in some substantial way. With my experience in town governance, project management, and as a science educator, I knew I could help the town address some of the serious challenges we will be facing in the next four years. It is up to the citizens of the town to decide if they want that help or not. But nothing changes the love and gratitude I feel in being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Next, we have Catherine Donwin, and then Larry Steingold, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
Hi, good evening. I'm here today to share with everyone who might not be aware that one of our preschools in town will be closing at the end of this week, and it has significantly impacted a lot of the families in our valley. So, some of the remaining teachers and a couple of parents have teamed up to open a new preschool in its place. And our biggest hurdle currently is funding. So, we are running our first annual fundraiser. It's a kids' choice car and bike show, and it'll be on November 5th, and it will run from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. And one of the reasons I'm here today is just to make the community aware of this, and anyone who is interested in contributing to this fundraiser, whether it be time or donations, we are running a raffle and silent auction, and it'll be a fun day for families as well with face painting and a petting zoo and all these things that we hope can draw people and help us be successful with this new school, because it's really vital to a lot of families. Some people have had to make the difficult choice of even quitting their jobs because they could not find alternate childcare in our valleys. We would, if we don't, if we are unable to open this preschool, we would be left with only one infant program in the entire valley, which means that there is only one school that accepts children ages six weeks to 18 months, I think, is the next preschool section. So, anyone who is able to volunteer time or businesses who would like to sponsor this event or sponsor the school in the future, it would be greatly appreciated. Spread the word. Don Lalos has generously offered to cater the event. So, there will be food and drinks and a lot of fun. So, you can contact us. I have flyers here, and you can reach us at sunnysideojai@gmail.com if anyone likes, would like some additional information or would like to volunteer their time. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Catherine.
Mayor, we, we heard time and date, but we didn't hear location.
Oh, I apologize. It will be at the former Holy Cross preschool, which is 1212 Maricopa Highway, right across from Chase Bank.
And date and time again?
November 5th. It's a Saturday from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Thank you.
Thanks, Catherine.
Do you want to leave the flyers with us? We can leave some at the front counter.
And they put QR code to access ticket registration.
Is the new, what's the new name of your preschool?
It'll be Sunnyside Christian Preschool and Daycare.
I heard that word, Sunnyside. I like that.
Yeah, it's nice. I think it's indicative of our valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Next, we have Larry Steingold, and then we have, next we have Larry Steingold, and then we have Jeffrey Starkweather.
Good evening. Everything we've been talking about since I've been here is all about water. We don't have enough water. It's not in the right place. Ventura wants to take our water. We have to conserve. We have a pipeline coming from the state, but what has the city actually done? Okay? I propose that you people put something on the, on the agenda that requires all gray water to stay on site and have it all done for every property within five years, and just put it on the agenda as a proposal to get passed. And then, you'll kick at the planning or proposal, and all the water people will come up with suggestions, and then, you'll have something to vote on. So, you either want to have gray water on site, or you don't. Or if it's just washing machine water, because I'm on a slab, or we have the inn, or whatever. Everybody collects it, but just make it a law, because if it's not a law and it's not required, then it obviously isn't a problem. Okay? So, we either deal with the water, have it all collected. It may not do anything. It may not even move the needle. Okay? But at least we're doing something. All right? So, thank you on that. So, I would like one of you to propose at the next city council meeting, and just have it done, and then, you'll get something accomplished. The other thing is, I received something today that the referendum for not having valid, to vote on valet parking has been denied. I've known you, I've seen you for three years now, four years, and I don't for a minute think that you came up with this, this anti-valet thing. Nobody, I mean, who did? Was it a business? Was somebody trying to interfere with a business deal? Because I'm from back east in Rhode Island. Let me tell you, this thing's, this anti-valet thing smells. Okay? Interfering in somebody's business to stop them from valeting on their own property across the street? If we're going to do anti-valet, let's do it for everybody. They can't do it at the TOPA when you have a function. Can't do that. And we can't have it at the inn, even though it's on their own property, but they don't have to cross the street. So, somebody put the bug in somebody's ear to screw up somebody's business. Okay? And I think it's a travesty. Okay? Because the, so, valet parking, it's like being against toilet paper.
Thank you, Larry.
Is this, is that, when she, when he said it wasn't accepted, is that permanent? It's not permanent.
Microphone, please. So, the city clerk had made a determination that there was a missing certification that hadn't been filed. So, the clerk did provide the opportunity for the proponents to provide that information. And so, I wouldn't say it's permanent necessarily yet, but we aren't, we haven't yet been told that that's coming in at any point. So.
Okay, thank you. Jeffrey Starkweather.
Thank you, Mayor, city council member, fellow citizens. I'm actually here also to speak on the proposed referendum. Personally, I think they, I wish they had passed so we could actually have this, this contest. Because my looking at it, well, it would cost the town $25,000, but that's no big thing. Or more. But I'm, for the first time, I actually got a chance to read the, what they gave to voters. I didn't know what it was. Partly, and the reason they got in trouble was they, they didn't advertise in our local newspaper so people could know what they're telling people. They advertise in the Star Free Press. So, to me, this thing is a Chicken Little, sky is falling scare tactic to get people to push something that we don't even need because we already regulate valet parking. Nobody can have a business. They have to go through the Planning Department, Planning Commission, which I'm on, and they have to go through the city council to get approval, just like El Roblar. The second thing was, when the El Roblar was being attacked for this, they raised fears of traffic, fears of parking spaces, and other fears of the city being overrun. But, in fact, this proposal eliminated El Roblar's use of on-street parking. Actually, as they pointed out, and the research shows, just 20% of people looking for parking, I mean, 20% of traffic in town towns are looking for parking. And third, they made it so that they actually don't go on a main street, and they park their cars, and they avoid traffic. So, it was the opposite. But I'm concerned about the language of this thing. It starts, it ends with saying, it's a whole bunch of stuff about the soul of the city and gentrification and so forth. It says, "Now, in a similar effort to protect our small town from overcoming overcrowded a little too fancy and subservient to high-end tourism and commerce, and instead, further support our daily quality of life of residents and access to local businesses by those who live here, we propose to limit the use of valet parking." What in the world that any of this stuff had to do with valet parking? And then, finally, they say, "The soul of Ojai." Excuse me. I grew up here. The soul of Ojai was welcoming. It was live and let live. It was, didn't matter what your religion, what your views were. You were accepted. Now, we got a group of people to say, "We want to, we want to close the gate at night, have all the people drive in in the morning, and then, get out of town, and we're not going to provide housing for them. We're going to decide who wants to live here. We don't want people from LA." But half of those people came from LA. This is really taking our city down a very dark, dangerous path, and I hope we stand up to it.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Weston, any public comments on Zoom?
Standby.
Thank you.
No raised hands.
Okay, thank you, Weston. Let's move on to the consent calendar. We do, we do have one public comment. Brian Akins.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I am up here just to thank you for your consideration tonight for the Historic Preservation Commission awards. The one-year award going to Gina for all of the work she did in putting that fabulous video together, as well as the timesheet. Also, a lifetime achievement award for John Jack Fay and for Ron Polito. Just one comment on Jack. We did an oral history interview with him a number of years ago. I was reviewing that oral history interview in order to do the write-up that's in front of you, and I focused on one thing he said. He said, "We were trying to get a redevelopment going behind the arcade." Everybody thought if we formed a redevelopment, all we would do is take their property from them. So, we were constantly fighting that. He said, "It got so bad that I would stand on the corner, and anybody that walked by, I would say, 'Let me tell you about the redevelopment committee.'" That's kind of how I feel at times. So, anyway, I, I am thrilled that we're presenting this, these awards to these individuals. Great people and lasting impact in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian. Much appreciated.
Mayor, can I quickly just note, we are, we do recommend approval of the consent agenda, but we did want to recommend a few edits to the community forest management plan. So, if, I would recommend that the motion reference these edits, which is require, or including a modification that requires the tree, the community forest management plan to be updated every three years, that there be an annual report of tree plantings provided to the city council, and that the tree committees to be appointed by the council, similar to how other commissions are appointed, which is typically done in January. And so, we are recommending the, the community forest management plan be adopted with those three modifications.
I have a question, or a question. On page, on item C, page three. Item C, page three. Is that a word in the motion? It says it was to the newly empanelled council.
Are we, is this the treasures report?
No, it's, oh, right. Maybe it's D.
Oh, yeah, there was two Cs. We had to type them.
Oh, yeah, no. The city council minutes.
Two Cs.
From October 11. And then, there's a motion at the bottom of page three, and it says, it's got to be a miscalling, although Bill is known for very fancy words.
Oh, yeah. Newly empanelled council. That is, that is a word. So.
It really is a word.
It is a word. It reflects the.
I should have looked it up. Okay.
When a new body is installed or empanelled, that, that is, it is a word.
Okay. They're not impaled.
I'll be gone soon. You won't have to worry about me anymore.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, thank you for those additions, James. Much appreciate.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
So, move to approve the consent item along with the three items that the city manager would like included in them.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. All right. We will move on to item number two. Public hearing, introduction of a holdover ordinance to maintain the city's prior fire hardening amendments. Presentation, James?
Yes, very brief. Thank you, Mayor. We will keep, we'll try to keep the next, this item and the next one very brief, as I know that the, the following item is probably the one most people are here to speak on. Very simply, every three years, the California Building Code gets updated, and every three years, the city has to go through the process of re-adopting the building code. If we don't re-adopt the building code by January 1st of the following year, we lose all of our city-specific amendments. Over the years, the city council and the, and the Building Appeals Board have worked very hard to include fire hardening amendments in our building code. We don't want to lose those. So, while the BAB is performing their review, which is currently scheduled for November 9th, we are recommending that we adopt what we're calling a holdover ordinance. It's essentially adopting the, the 2022 Building Code with all of our prior fire hardening improvements. So, we recommend doing that. We'll have to do the introduction tonight with the adoption on December 13th. We'll have to do the introduction tonight with the adoption on December 13th. And so that's why we're doing it now, to try to get it in place before January 1st. So with that, we recommend introducing the ordinance to update the, adopt the 2022 Building Code.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council? Weston, any public comments on this item?
No raised hands.
Okay, all right, we will open and close the public hearing and move on to discussion.
Move introduction.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, wonderful.
That's nice.
Okay.
Good start.
Let's move on to item number three, agenda item number three, that CalPERS retired annuaent, annuitant. Got it right. Position. So we're bringing back Andrea. That's very exciting.
Yeah, so.
She was happy in Montana.
Yeah, she is happily retired, but she, she apparently watches these meetings. I guess she's watching us now.
Oh, my goodness.
And fills the poll back to Ojai.
Whoa.
That's so nice. That's really nice.
So because of our CalPERS rules that the, that every agency that's members in CalPERS has to follow, CalPERS requires that whenever we bring somebody who had retired recently back to the city, that we have, we do it through a formal, transparent process. And so this item on the agenda is simply to do that and to allow for that public process and have the city council approve and adopt a resolution which would allow us to bring back Andrea Mackey to work part-time. It's just part of our strategy right now with the tough job market. One thing where we are doing that, we had, we had never done these really in the past. Very rarely did we bring back a retired annuitant. But we've done it a couple of times recently with good results, so we were looking to do that again. So we recommend adopting the resolution that would allow us to bring the employee back. Once they are brought back, they would, all the standard rules are in place and they report to the, their director and ultimately the city manager. But just for the appointment, we have to go through this process with the city council adoption.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
I have a, I said, so James, it's 960 rather than 1040 on the allotted hours?
Yes.
A little under, it's a little under half a year at part-time.
Yes.
And then do you have the discretion to use her up to 40 hours a week as long as you don't exceed the 960? Is that how it works?
I believe that's the case. With CalPERS, we always double-check with them before we do that, but.
So you can use Andrea as needed, as long as you don't go over your.
Exactly.
Your 960 allocated hours.
Exactly, and it's just helpful right now with, you know, with some recent staff changes to be able to bring someone in who has the experience, so.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank, Weston, any comments on Zoom on this item?
No comments, no raised hands.
Okay, all right, we'll open up for discussion.
Move to approve the recommendation.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, welcome back, Andrea. Thank you so much.
We don't have to worry about, it involves money or anything?
We're good.
Well, we voted on it.
No, the voice vote counts, so we had, we had 5-0 on that one.
Okay, we will move on to item number four, the second reading and adoption of ordinance regarding a 67-unit development agreement at cottages among the flowers, Mallory Way bungalows, World University, and 304 South Montgomery. And just, so you know, the agenda or the schedule, we'll have a staff report, then we will have open public comment, we will hear from the developers' reps, we'll hear from the ad hoc committee, council members Blatz and Wirick. We'll pause for council questions, then we will take public speakers, and there will be a brief rebuttal, comments by the developers, and then we will close the comments. All right, James.
So Mayor, one second, just again, just, you know how many speaker cards we have?
Twelve.
One more.
One more.
Okay, okay. And Zoom is, is an unknown.
Okay. One hand is raised on Zoom, and if any other Zoom attendees would like to spish, speak on this, please raise your hand.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Weston. And we have 13 cards right now. Okay, go ahead, James. Thank.
Thank you. So we do have a presentation. It's a little shorter than the one two weeks ago, and we'll try to keep it brief. I know we, we talked about it at length last meeting, but just to kind of go over the, the big picture. Give me one second. My PowerPoint wasn't moving. Okay, so just as a reminder, or if somebody wasn't following the last meeting, what we have before council is now the second reading and adoption of an ordinance for a development agreement that spans these four sites shown on the PowerPoint before you. Mallory Way bungalows at 412 Mallory Way, cottages among the flowers at 312 West Eliso Street, World University at 107 North Ventura Street, and what we're calling the Montgomery site at 304 South Montgomery Street. The development agreement was created with the intention of being able to better protect residents with tenant protection and to increase the amount of affordable housing that could offset those projects. And so we'll get to that in a minute. But last meeting, we talked kind of at length about the long history of this project, and I won't go through it as detailed, but this project originated with the cottages among the flowers project being approved back in 2007, 15 years ago. We talked about the fact that a final tract map was then approved in 2009. Time extensions were approved in 2011 and 16, and in 2019, after the Planning Commission approved a time extension, the city council appealed the extension and challenged the extension due to the project not meeting the city requirements for replacing affordable housing units. And so quite the complex history. One of the challenges is that it's been approved by the city several times, which would create potentially a, some risks to the city of, of trying to deny the project moving forward. And so in 2019, when the city was faced with that prospect, the city council created an ad hoc subcommittee that was then tasked with working with the applicants to develop the development agreement, again, to protect both the affordable housing units and to make sure that there was appropriate tenant protection. That agreement was negotiated through 2020 and 2021, and ultimately, in January of 2022, the city council reviewed a Deal Point version of the project. The council, at that time, directed staff to move forward with developing, or drafting the full development agreement, which was then presented on July 12th to the city council. At that meeting, the city council directed staff and the committee to try to improve the deal. We've worked with the applicant since that time to add more enhanced tenant protection and also to add two, two additional deed restricted units that would be located at the cottages, which will also help with the phasing to try to make sure that people are able to move into other units before work on existing units start up. And so just big picture, again, what we're looking at in, as part of the proposal is cottages among the flowers has 12 units total. Two of those units would be deed restricted, affordable, one, one low income and one very low income. The deed restrictions for all of these are the 55-year deed restriction. So we're, they're essentially guaranteeing that they will be rented at the state's low, very low, or moderate rates for the next 55 years, so through at least 2077 at this point. Maybe longer based on, on how long the, the work takes, so. The Mallory Way bungalows proposal is to have 30 units total with seven affordable, six in the moderate category, one in the low category. World University is 10 units total with three of those being affordable, two moderate, one low. And then the Montgomery site on South Montgomery would have 15 units total. All 15 would be affordable with 12 of those moderate and three low. Again, the last bullet point there is to highlight one of the real focuses over the last month. Working with the, with the applicant was to strengthen the relocation plan. And we have that in a little more detail on the next slide. The relocation plan includes a few options for the current tenants. One, allowing the tenant to be first in line for a similar unit with moving costs up to $2,000 covered. Another option would be to relocate to another unit within the project at the tenant's verified level of affordability for one year. And so that's if, if, if there wasn't a, for whatever reason, if there wasn't a direct affordable unit available at the same rate, they would be able to relocate and get that level of affordability locked in for one year. We don't anticipate that based on the phasing, but that was one possibility. 12 months of current, or the final option was being able to get 12 months of current rent if no unit is available in the project and moving costs of up to $2,000. And so last, I think, well, we have a couple more slides. We know that there's been a lot of conversation about what is affordable now. I think with real estate in California and especially Southern California and especially Ojai, the word affordable loses a lot of meaning. But when we say affordable, deed restricted, we are referring to the state's affordable limits. Those limits are updated annually, so we note that in this slide that these are the limits right now. And they may, they, they tend to update the numbers every year, so they may change over the next few years. But the affordable limits in 2022, as you can see, if you make up to $43,900, you would be considered in a household by yourself. You would be able to qualify as very low income. If you make from 43,901 dollars up to $70,250 as a one-person household, you would be able to qualify as a low income. And if you make then from $70,251 to $96,950, then you would be able to qualify as a moderate income, one-person household. And so what we're trying to show here is, again, we mentioned last meeting, that the dollar amounts that we showed last meeting are the ceiling, not the floor. It's the maximum amount you can make and qualify for that category, not a minimum amount you can make. And similarly, we had shown the rents last meeting, same thing with those. The rent, it would be up to $878 in very low income. That's the, the amount that they could charge. For low income, it'd be up to $1,405, and moderate income up to $2,909 for a one-person household. I won't go through each of these in detail, but that's a one-person household. This chart where it shows 1, 2, 3, 4, those are two people in a household, three people in a household, or four people in a household. So each time you add another person to the household, the income limit goes up and the rent limit potentially goes up. So that is what is meant in this development agreement when we say deed restricted, affordable. And it will be verified by the area housing agency or authority, and they'll be held to the state standard each year that it is updated. It'll be held to the state standard. Just as far as the, some other key items in the development agreement, in addition to getting the deed restricted units, 27 deed restricted units for 55 years. We also, in the development agreement, were able to get a trail that is going to be a walking or hiking trail that will go through Mallory and cottages that would be built and maintained by the owner, by the owner. We were also able to work out a opportunity to have a water recharge within Mallory Way and Cottage to help offset some water impacts. And then also, as we said, the key, one of the key things was the tenant protections via the phased development and relocation plan. I'm going to go over just quickly a couple areas of concern that we had received a lot of comments about, and then I'll ask the, I'll turn it over to the city attorney for the last two slides. We've received comments about the historic nature of both the cottages in Mallory Way. As we went into detail last meeting, those had been reviewed previously. I, I don't know that the HPC now would agree with the findings from 2007, but those were reviewed, and again, as part of that convoluted, complex history where the city had approved these things prior, which limits our ability somewhat to, to now go backwards on those things. But in 2007, the city had reviewed the cottages in Mallory Way and put some mitigation measures in place, and so those are included in the conditions. We also reviewed the tree permits at those times, and there were some trees that were potentially going to be removed. Those are set to be replaced at a 2:1 or 4:1 ratio, depending on the location. And we also noted in the staff report now, based on the last meeting, a recommendation to include authorization to contract with the local arborist to consult further on those, on the, related to trees. And then finally, water usage. We got a lot of questions about water usage. That ultimately is considered by Casitas Water District. And the applicant, I'm sure in their presentation, will speak to some of the water-saving measures that they are looking for, such as the low-flow fixtures, but that ultimately is under the purview of Casitas Water District, so. With that, I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us the last two slides.
Thank you, Mr. Vega. So a couple of points on SEQA and sort of options and perspectives. So SEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, for those who aren't familiar with it. SEQA requires, is the state law that requires the city to evaluate, in a nutshell, potential environmental impacts of any project as defined. In this context, the Planning Commission and the Ad hoc Committee recommend that the council declare the project exempt from further review under the California Environmental Quality Act for several independent reasons. First, under, each of the four sites is exempt under one of several exemptions. Largely, the exemptions for infill development projects that are small sites of less than five acres that are consistent with general plan and areas that are existing developed areas. And then additionally, an exemption for existing facilities for the three sites that involve conversion of existing buildings rather than new ground-up construction. And then for the small new units at cottages in Mallory, 15303, which is the new construction, the small structures exemption. And then the infill development exemption for Montgomery, which is, of course, all-new construction, along with the affordable housing exemption for the three sites that involve affordable housing. And last, a further exemption, or rather requirement to not review further for cottages in Mallory as those were previously reviewed and approved by the city in a mitigated negative declaration, MND on that first bullet, and then in FEIR, a final environmental impact report, back in 2007 for cottages and 2012 for Mallory. And those, the projects as proposed are substantially the same as were previously reviewed and approved pursuant to the SEQA process, and there's no basis for requiring further modification or further review as the net of the, the basic project hasn't changed for those two sites as proposed from before. I will note there are two new units proposed for cottages. The two units are affordable, one low, one very low, and they're proposed to be added on top of an existing garage without changing the footprint of the site and without changing substantially any of the impacts, given that there'll be relatively small units and relatively low impact. So with that, the Ad hoc Committee and the Planning Commission recommended that the council find the project exempt from SEQA. And then, next slide. This is just a recap. We covered this in detail at the prior several hearings, but I wanted to reiterate it for the council and the public. There's essentially three possible options, and this is a summary. This isn't every possible piece of the decision tree. But it's essentially three states of the world. Today, in the default, if the council declines to approve the development agreement and then denies the extensions for cottages in Mallory. then denies the extensions for cottages in Mallory, and then there's a lawsuit, and then we win, what will we end up with? We'll end up with 35 market rate units, the 33 existing, up to two more at cottages that would be, as exists now, with no tenant protections at the enhanced level as provided in the DA. The only tenant protections would be the state law protections under the Tenant Protection Act, which imposes a limitation on how much rent can be increased year to year, between 5% and 10%, depending on the year, but does not prohibit, in the end, getting to market rate. It also does not prohibit evictions. The city would have to pay its attorney's fees, and there would be no enhanced tenant protections of the kind proposed in the development agreement. And there would be zero deed restricted affordable units. That's option one, the left column. The middle option would be the default that would happen if we were to, the council were to deny the development agreement and then deny the extensions and then the developer litigate, and then we lost the lawsuit. So that's sort of the worst-case scenario, is the middle column. We would end up with 40 units, 33 market rate, seven affordable restricted of those seven, six moderate, one low, zero very low. City would be out several hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees, somewhere between $500,000 and $700,000, depending on how that went down, and no tenant protections, no added, no enhanced tenant protections. Option three is the proposed development agreement as recommended for approval by the Planning Commission, as recommended for approval by the Ad Hoc Committee, and as this council voted last meeting, albeit not unanimously, to approve at the first reading, is the development agreement, which has been summarized, 67 units, 30 market rate of the 10 additional market rates, 10-year rental restriction, 27 affordable units, 20 moderate, six low, one very low, all 55-year with the tenant protection program. So that's sort of the three states of the world, big picture. And I will note, as the council considers those three states of the world, the development agreement provides certainty. We will get exactly what is on the table, assuming it survives challenge if it's itself-challenged, and we'll get those units in those affordability categories. And the developing, the phasing plan and the tenure requirement incentivizes the developer to build the whole project because it puts the affordable units up front. Sometimes cities run into trouble when a developer can build the market rate units first, and then they never build the affordable. They just walk. This flips it. The affordable units are up front, so incentivizing the developer to then complete the project, because then that then ensures, you leave it outside, that then ensures that the developer has the incentive to complete the full project, which accomplishes the unit count as listed, and it creates certainty, and it avoids litigation paid for by the city's general fund. There is obviously a risk. We've been threatened lawsuits by a couple of folks challenging the approval itself. If that lawsuit is filed, the developer through, pursuant to the indemnity, will have to cover the city's defense costs. And I'll note that that's one of two key changes made to the ordinance, and these are administrative changes, but I want to call them out. Section 13 on page 4-30 is the indemnification requirement, the same as was in the development agreement and was in the resolution, baked front and center in the ordinance.
Where is this? I'm sorry.
Page 4-30. And section 13, about middle of the page, is the indemnification requirement, which was strengthened to ensure zero question that if the project is approved as proposed and a lawsuit is filed, the developer will pay for the defense. Second, right below that is the added tree protection condition that Mr. Vega mentioned, new condition number 14, which provides that in addition to all of the other tree requirements in the existing documents, the city will prepare a updated tree protection plan that the developer will then implement. And as noted, the, there is a risk of a lawsuit if, on the other sides, if the city does not approve the development agreement. That decision itself is legislative and should survive any challenge, because it's a legislative decision, it's a policy decision. The lawsuit that creates, in which there is significant risk, is the subsequent denial of the extension for cottages in Mallory. That's, as you've heard from the developer, they have arguments. The city is confident that we can win, but it is not certain. Litigation is always uncertain. There are decent arguments on their end, and we would be in the difficult position of having denied housing, which is always a challenge in this day and age. The city is confident we can win because we would be denying market rate housing to promote affordable housing. Nonetheless, that risk is on the table, and that would be expensive lawsuit with an uncertain result. Hence, the Ad Hoc Committee's recommendation to proceed with the development agreement, which creates certainty and avoids that risk. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. We are available for any questions, and then I know there may be some. Thank you.
So according to the schedule, we're going to hear from the developers' reps first, and then we'll take.
What about the questions?
We'll take those from, council questions after the Ad Hoc Committee?
We have to do it that way because I'm going to forget my questions.
I would defer back to the council, but.
They apply to the slideshow.
Yeah, if you want, we can take questions now, just on the council.
I just have a couple.
Just the staff presentation, and then, and then I would, but I'll defer to the council.
Council, okay. All right, go ahead, Susan.
Okay. You know, the question I forget to ask, when did the developer purchase the cottages among the flowers? Was it already divided? Because I've, I don't know if that's in the report.
As I understand the facts, the developer bought the cottages in 2016, and the track map was recorded in 2010. So it was already divided into condos when they bought it.
Okay, thank you. And then, a lot of my questions, I'll wait until council discussion.
Of course.
But, see, I've already forgotten. Just, okay, I'll just wait. I should have called it out when I was, when you were doing the slides. Okay, it'll come back to me during council discussion. Thank you.
Okay, we will go ahead and open public comment. We'll hear from the developers' reps first.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Nice to see you today. Okay, we have a PowerPoint.
Oh, I remembered my question. You could probably answer it. May I, please?
Through the mayor, sure.
My question was, is there anything in the development agreement that prevents the developer from adding additional low-income or low-low-income units? You know, if he wants, because 10 years is a long time, six, you know, by the time he gets to Mallory Way, there could be a lot of changes in the world or in his circumstances. There's, is there anything that prevents him from improving what I would consider an improvement?
The development agreement does not prohibit the developer from taking one of the proposed units and making it affordable at a lower level, not prohibited by the development agreement. If the developer wanted to add another unit at very low, say, or extremely low, he would have to apply to the city to modify the approvals to add another unit. So existing, existing 67, making it cheaper, fine, doesn't need city approval. If it's out of the goodness of his heart, adding a 68th unit, that would take modification, which could be relatively easily done.
Okay, thank you.
With council approval.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor, council, Beth Collins, representing the owner of Ojai Bungalows. Okay, great, my PowerPoint. Let's go to the next slide. Okay, so here's the phasing. As you'll see, and as you've heard from the staff presentation and from the other discussions we've had, the affordable units are prioritized here to allow the relocation of tenants. We can go to the next slide. Now, you'll recognize this. This is the tenant relocation plan, and it applies to all current tenants. And then on the bottom, for income-qualified tenants, there's additional tiered protection for those tenants. Let's go to the next slide. I covered this next, last time. There is a housing crisis, and you all are well aware of that here in Ojai. We have substandard and overcrowded housing stock, and this, your RENA units are 53, and this project alone is an opportunity to get half of your, of your units. So let's go to the next slide. Here goes to something you haven't seen before. The 2013 replacement housing provisions, we do not believe apply to this project. You've received a couple of letters from me on that point, and here, in fact, is another reason why. These, in essence, the city doesn't have 33 affordable units right now. So let me walk through this provision of your code, 10-2.904. That is the provision that this, we've been discussing. This is the reason that people are claiming that we have 33 units, and the provision provides that when you convert or demo an existing residential dwelling unit that's inhabited by persons or families of very low, lower, or moderate income, you cannot approve that conversion or demolition unless provisions have been made for the replacement of those dwelling units. Well, what does inhabited mean? Well, the ordinance defines it. It's a dwelling unit at the time that is inhabited by a person or household who, at the time the application's filed for a land use permit, is low, moderate, or very low income. So what does that mean? We have cottages in Mallory. When were cottages in Mallory deemed approved? Cottages was approved all the way back in 2007, and Mallory was approved in 2012, well before your 2013 ordinance. So your own ordinance talks about going forward the conversion of units, but it doesn't talk about this type of situation where the applications were deemed approved back in 2007 and 2013. Okay, but what if they actually apply the extensions? Well, the extensions were applied for in 2019 and 2017. So why do we care? We care for a couple of reasons. One, you all got a letter from another lawyer claiming that the development agreement can't be approved until you understand the affordability of the tenants that are in the units right now. I'm telling you, that's actually not what your replacement housing provisions say. They say it is at the time the application's filed and that it doesn't actually apply to the current tenants, because the only current tenants right now on these four properties are in cottages in Mallory. So this is all, goes to why the development agreement is such a good deal, by the way. But it also helps explain why we don't think we have legal liability associated with the improvement of the development agreement. Also, you received a number of, it appears to be kind of a campaign of people providing their income information, their current income information. This is also key to tell you that that's irrelevant. Under your own code for the replacement housing, inhabited is defined as what is the income at the time the application's filed. So either it's totally irrelevant because cottages in Mallory were approved long before your ordinance, or it's what is their income at the time of 2017 and 2019, when those applications were submitted. So you might think, wow, maybe we should rewrite our ordinance, but actually that makes sense because when, rents do take a hit when an application is filed for redevelopment. Okay? People know that the, the units are targeted for redevelopment, and therefore rents could go down, and maybe even the income of the people go down, and therefore measuring whether or not you need replacement units, it is appropriate to do it at the time that application was filed. So I believe your ordinance is correct. It's just the, the application of it, people are using today as what is the tenants today, and that's actually not the test. So this, again, just underscores why you have a very good deal in front of you. You don't have 33 affordable units, and you're going to get 27 deed restricted units because of the work of your Ad Hoc Committee and because of the commitment of this council to get us to this place. So let's go to the next slide. This is some additional information about the cottages in Mallory, and some of this was just discussed. And there's actually a typo, so it should say the owners bought cottages in 2014. Okay? The owners bought cottages in 2014. Mallory was bought in 1999, and it was approved with an EIR for redevelopment in 2012. Okay? But cottages was back, bought back in 2014, and the question was, well, what about the map? The map was recorded October 8, 2010. Okay? So that's when it became individual units that could have been sold off separately, and again, not subject to your replacement ordinance, which didn't even exist back in 2010. Okay, so a little bit more info on the tenants. Because the, these units, I mean, our clients bought in 2014, and then were working to get the building permits to start construction. And so they weren't raising rents, and they were letting tenants know that there, you know, there was going to be reconstruction of the units. So just so that this council knows, 17 of the 31 residents actually have their leases warning them that the premises will be remodeled. The year varies, either it's 21 to 23, 20 to 22. It looks like we're probably not going to make any of those dates, but they were warned. The tenants all acknowledged that they would be advised that there would be work proceeding and that they, with 60 days' notice, if their unit was going to be remodeled, that they would be displaced. So this all goes to the fact, this is the state of affairs with the lease. This DA gives these folks more protections. This DA is a good deal for the tenants. Additionally, a notable fact potentially is 13 of the tenants moved in after the council filed appeal in 2019. So we have a situation where we have a number of tenants, they were aware of the redevelopment. We are doing everything we can with this deal to be able to protect them, and that is the whole point and one of the reasons we should, I think, feel very good about this development agreement. Okay, next slide. Again, 27 deed restricted units for 55 years when currently there are none, and as I described, I do not believe the city has a right to have any deed restricted units on this property at this time, under your 2013 ordinance. You're also going to get additional market rate housing. That's all, all of the housing will be updated, modern building codes, water efficiency, energy efficiency, phasing. We've discussed all these things. In the end, you're going to have a 40% deed restricted affordable project and, and additional market rate units. It's a big win for Ojai. Next slide. You heard from the city attorney about the exemptions. That, it's all correct. One correction I would make is that the Montgomery has an affordable housing exemption as well included in the NOE. That's on page 13 of 14 in your staff report from October 18. It's also in the notices of exemption. Next slide. This describes the minor alterations. Staff did a very good job going through this, and we discussed this last time, so the highlight is there are very few environmental impacts from this, and the city complied with SEQA. Next slide. Here's some info on cottages of the flowers and the historic resources. We discussed this a bit last time, that this is really the way to save the cottages. The protections built into the original cottages approvals allows for the careful refurbishment in compliance with the Secretary of Interior standards to avoid impacts. Next slide. This also describes how there are no historic impacts. They were thoroughly analyzed in both the MND and the EIR, and frankly, it's too late. I mean, those are very old documents. They, if someone wanted to challenge those mitigation measures, the time has lapsed now, and we have, we have that MND and EIR that exists and that the city has found no new significant impacts associated with this project. Next slide. There are some shots of Mallory. All right, let's go to the next slide. We talked about this last time. We are going to have almost twice as many units, actually more than, sorry, I can do math, 33 units to 67, so more than twice as many units, half as much water being used. Okay? And the residents are already here. They're living in substandard housing, and they will get to move into superior units. This project allows renters to relocate from those garages or carports or trailers or couches, wherever they are, to replacement units. Next slide. The tree canopy is preserved. You're actually going to have more than double the total number of trees at Mallory and cottages. It will significantly expand the urban canopy. Next slide. There's some, a bit of misinformation going around as far as the size of the replacement trees. There are 73 new trees that range from 24-inch to 72-inch box. A 72-inch box tree is 21, 22, excuse me, feet tall. That's a, that's a significant. That's a, that's a significant tree, 22 feet tall. And these are replacement trees. Next slide. There was the claim that this is not infill. This is a map. It shows your sensitive habitat areas. You can see there's actually an error here, that little overlay, that the black and white area goes down. But this is squarely in the center of your town. This is urban infill. Okay, next slide. This shows the various sites. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about cumulative impacts. Cumulative impacts, I thought maybe, it sounded like a newscaster, like, okay, sorry. So, this project is distributed around the city. That's part of the reason that there aren't significant cumulative impacts, for example, on visual resources. You only measure cumulative impacts of visual resources based on what you can see, right? Traffic, of course, distributed around the city. Let's go to the next slide. Speaking of traffic, this is a shot of OPR screening categories. It was in the technical report that I submitted last week with my letter. But at this, I just want to be able to highlight it to explain the importance of, one, the fact that Mallory is an affordable project under OPR's guidance. That means there is no significant VMT or vehicle miles traveled impact. Similarly, on smaller projects, if it generates less than 110 net trips, there is no significant VMT impact. Next slide. This shows you cottages, only 24 trips, that's less than 110. Mallory, 20 trips, again, less than 110. World University not taking credit for the current office use. So, it's actually a conservative assessment, is 61. Again, that's less than 110. So, we have small project with minimal impact, cumulative and project level. Let's go to the next slide. The other thing is, the city just hasn't built housing. There's been projections in your general plan that you would have up to 3,414 units constructed. But the city is actually 424 short. Here, we're just adding 34. Okay? So, we're within your projections. Next slide. Here, Casitas has considered and does consider drought and residential development. Casitas has actually never projected demand to exceed unavailable, available supplies. And we went back to all the urban water management plans, all the way back to 2005. And Casitas has not ever projected demand to exceed supplies. The buffer is 911 acre feet per year. That's far less than the water usage of this project. In fact, this project will use less water than the current 33 units. Next slide. Infill reduces commuting. We included a lot of studies and science in our letter that describes all the reasons that infill is important and all the ways that improves our, you know, environment. And honestly, having lived in LA in a portion of my life and having lived in my car for hours and hours and hours a day, it is also a quality of life issue. Commuting is brutal. It's brutal on the body. It's brutal on the mind. It's hard to get home for dinner. It's just, it's a rougher way to live. And so, it's actually a gift to the quality of life to the people in your community to build affordable housing near where they work. Next slide. Okay, we have our options. We have here two letters. We have from two lawyers. Those are one of the things you receive today. So, I think there are probably more than three options, three options, right? Because there's the litigation that's being threatened related to SEQA and the government code. And then on the other side is if you don't extend the Mallory and cottages, then there could be the Housing Accountability Act litigation. So, let's skip three slides. This is really the sum up slide. There we go. So, comparing the three options, you can see the DA does give the certainty that your city attorney is talking about. It gives you 67 units, 27 of which will be deed restricted. You get to avoid any attorney's fees because of the indemnification provision. And that includes if there's a SEQA lawsuit. That would be shouldered by the developer. You also get the phasing and the added tenant protections. And you get to avoid the $500,000 to $700,000, that was the quote I heard tonight, in potential attorney's fees, not to mention, under option two, the risk of having to pay my attorney's fees if I were to prevail in a Housing Accountability Act case, which I hope would never happen because you're going to hopefully approve the development agreement today. So, these are the options laid out. The one, I will make one other point. There's a mention in the letter submitted tonight by Ms. Venskis that this council is somehow running afoul of the 2013 replacement housing provisions. And I would say again, it is not for a number of reasons. One of them is that I don't think it applies. But another is because your own ordinance says that you can do another equivalent action. So, even if you believe personally that the ordinance applies, this development agreement will qualify as another equivalent action. So, I hope that you can, next slide. I'm here if you have any questions. We ask that you support the development agreement and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Beth. So, we will now move on, okay. Well, we're going to have council questions for Beth right now?
Can you, Beth, and possibly the city attorney?
Well, we're going to hear from the Council Ad Hoc Negotiating Committee first. So, council members Wyerick and Blatz, and then we'll move on to questions?
Okay, she'll be back.
All right. I'm not going to go on at length as I did at the last meeting because I think the information tonight only further reinforces what I said before. If you look at this as a risk reward decision, what are the rewards, what are the risks? And you look at the entire picture, I think it's very clear that the public purpose is better served by passing this development agreement than not doing so. Even if we prevailed using the rationale of the people opposed to this development agreement, there's less purpose, public purpose served in terms of what we end up with. It's much better to drive resources into housing than into litigation. And if we approve this development agreement, we have a very strong indemnification agreement, indemnification provision as outlined by the city attorney. So, that reduces the city's risk if there is, if we approve the development agreement. The track map situation only enhances the risk reward mix towards passing this development agreement because that was recorded well in, well back in history and reduces the level of tenant protection if we do not approve this. State law is very limited in terms of what we can do in terms of protecting tenants. And in terms of actual baselines, there is no current deed restricted affordable housing in Ojai. This would provide a first significant step. And again, much more protection for the existing tenants with it than without it. To me, that makes a clear case that we are serving the public purpose with this. And I think we should approve it.
Thanks, Bill. I walked Mallory and the cottages today and I met some really nice tenants and I want to thank them. People opened their house for us. We walked through, got to see a lot of things. And I just wanted to thank them first. It was really nice. And there were some really good conversations. And I think that I just really appreciate the level of understanding that we've gotten to. I think it's taken a lot of work. I think it's hard to overcome some of the misinformation and some of the campaign stuff that's out there trying to twist what's going on with the situation. And that doesn't make the decision easy, but at least it makes it clear that we're at least operating on the same set of facts. At least it feels like that now. And I really appreciate that out of the public and thank you for your patience. God knows we've been patient up here. It's been a long, long, arduous grind getting to where we are tonight. With that, I just, I just really want to say that, you know, that this, this is not something that we want to do. I can't describe it any better. But I, I'm too involved and too understanding and I've done too much research and I've looked at it from every angle to not be able to, I have to say, the ramifications of not doing anything and denying moving forward is simply not acceptable compared to trying to move forward with how hard we've worked to get a decent development plan in place that could be approved. When we talk about the context of legal fees, I want to make this clear because I don't know if everybody always understands this. But everybody in here knows the water case is going on for the most part. The city, earlier, under the consent item, approved up to $400,000 to be spent after 250 roughly has been spent so far on the Ventura Water litigation. And we're a peripheral player. I'm not allowed to vote on that. I'm sickened that we're spending that much money, but that's the way it is. And that gives you just an example with 50 attorneys in the room, four other cities, multiple agencies. That's how elevated these costs get. And that's without there being a trial yet. That's with only mediation going on. That's with people trying to cooperate to come to a solution. That's with me personally as an attorney doing a lot of work. That was a lot less expensive than that, frankly. But it's, it's just part of this unfortunate equation that we're looking at. So, I appreciate the patience everybody's had and the level of understanding that's out there. And I appreciate the tenants who are there. And again, I just can't thank them enough. It was really nice walking through and talking to some people. And, and just saying, you know, hey, you know, what, what else can we do? What do we want to do? And I don't want any of them to be displaced. I, you know, if I had my druthers, keeping everything the way it is and improving around it, if we weren't stuck with the prior decisions of prior councils, I can absolutely tell you this would be a completely different conversation. It doesn't make the project bad. It would just make it different. But, you know, and I thank everybody for listening to all this. It's really, really tough. It's a, it's a really, really difficult decision. And I, again, I still don't know where I'm going to land tonight. But I, I just really have a lot of appreciation for people who've reached out to me and the people I've spoken to and a lot of really great people in our community saying, hey, you know what, we're finally getting to a point where we get this. Thank you for the things you've said and, and thank you for doing your best to make this as good for us as we can, knowing that it may not be what we all really wish could happen. So, leave it at that.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Ryan. We'll pause for any council questions?
I think we, I think we're going to have a couple. Well, I do have one and I wanted to ask Beth this. And this is something that came up walking through today. And I want to make sure that it's crystal clear. So, if tenants at some point decide they want to move out, now whether that's after an approval of the development agreement or after a notice that they're being evicted, whatever it might be, when specifically, when does their rights to receive any of the relocation benefits kick in? Is it only after they've been given 60 days' notice and they're stuck in a 60-day window to decide? And how much flexibility do they have? So, I spoke with a really wonderful family today and they had a two-bedroom. And she was very specific that she really needed a two-bedroom because her and her child were there. And she was very concerned that, you know, even with relocation plans, it may be very difficult. Or she was concerned that what they would qualify for may be pushing them in a direction that doesn't have that second bedroom. And it wasn't a very large unit, but it did have two bedrooms. So, I wanted to make sure we knew exactly how that would work and how we're making sure that if, if the unit that they're being asked to or what they qualified affordably for, if that doesn't work for their needs, what exactly are their rights and when do those kick in?
I would like to take that and look at the DA to make sure that, I think off the top of my head, unless Matthew, who's encyclopedic over there, or James, I can see, I think it's a 60-day notice and then that's when it kicks in. But is that, is that correct?
Yeah, it's currently drafted. The tenant relocation program requirements kick in for tenants who are current tenants as of the date of the approval and to our current tenants, given that relocation notice. I will say it could be drafted to add that protection for current tenants as of the date of approval if the developer would so agree.
Okay, other questions from Cal?
If I may finish then, then my, then I'm making that request. Is that something that can be included in there? Because giving, the hard part is, right, especially if multiple tenants at the same time get 60-day notices, limited housing stock, and if they're not available or specifically, even if it's after the 60 days, I, I know exactly what it says, by the way, Beth, if you need to know. And I know that it was ambiguous and I know that it, and it doesn't go into effect until the 60 days. But as any good attorney knows, you don't answer your own questions. But the point is, I, I want to make sure that these situations, because there are some uniqueness and I don't know. I mean, one thing we don't know is the suitability for the next affordable housing. What we do know is that we've negotiated the ability to be moved up and have a year of the same rent being protected or the same level of affordability. But there are situations that I'm concerned about and I don't know if we have an answer or not. But, you know, different families have different needs. And what we found out is that a lot of those different units have significantly different characteristics. Some are one-bedroom, some are, you know, some are studios and, and some are really the only type of place you could find anything like that that had two bedrooms.
Okay, so what specific, so that my clients know what the amendment is, what is the specific language of the relocation plan, which I think is Exhibit D, which I'm having trouble finding. I think it's Exhibit D. But what is the specific language that you're proposing to modify so that they can understand?
Well, the, and by all means, I'm not the only one who's going to be debating this. But to throw something out there to start, since I created this mess in the first place, what I would like to see is some flexibility on the tenants if they have the option. Now, because there may not be units available. That's the difficult part. If there's units available and they meet their needs, then obviously, we want them the first in line to be able to do that. And I think that's kind of already there. But if, let's say they qualify as low, affordable, or moderate and there isn't a two-bedroom, then are they eligible for the other parts of the relocation plan? The $2,000 move out and the, and the one year of covered, you know, rent from their, their old amount. So, in other words, even though there might be one, as we discussed, or there might be another affordable unit in the project that's equal or above that, but since it doesn't meet their needs, would they be able to say, you know what, I'd prefer to opt to something else? And that's one. And then two is, which is more of a question, but the 60-day window is pretty tight. So, if they find out in 60 days and they find out, hey, you're not going to have a unit available that has my needs, that leaves them in a, in a pretty short window to try and find something that does. So, I would be asking if they have more flexibility in which part of the relocation plan they'd be able to access and whether or not there would be some, either an extended notice or some other type of larger window for them to find another place. If they have the flexibility of part C, if you will, of the relocation plan, would they be given more opportunity to be able to do that?
So, I think slide three goes through the language there of my PowerPoint. And so, we can kind of all look at it. And while Matthew has found it and is highlighting it right now, which I appreciate.
Yeah, so in the packet, it's page 4-88 and 4-89. That's the residential relocation and assistance plan. And taking these different pieces in separate pieces. Sure, 4-88 and in the next page, 4-89. That's the tenant relocation.
Attachment A or page 74 and 75 of 98 in the packet.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Bill.
We have lots of page numbers on our pages.
This is so important. If you have an extra minute, make sure we have it. Is it possible to pull it? Oh, here.
Attachment, yeah.
So, it's Exhibit A, 73 of 13.
Yeah, it's, it's attachment D to the DA, but it's buried between sets of plans.
Exhibit D.
Exhibit D, thank you.
Attachment A, Exhibit D.
Okay, so, is it possible to pull up the PowerPoint so we can all look at it or?
James, can you pull up the PowerPoint?
And we'll give a moment to make sure everyone finds it.
Yeah. There we go. Okay. So if you're income qualified, so no matter, you're not talking about the not income qualified.
I, I think there's a couple of questions here, if I could jump in. So, Suzie, are you on the same?
Yeah, the residential relocation assistance plan.
Yep, that's the one. Of course, of course.
The RRAP plan.
So I, if we could take these requests from Councilmember Blatt in turn, I think that might be helpful. The first is the request as to what, which persons does this apply to? Right now, as noted, as drafted, it applies to people who live in, live at the cottages in Mallory as of the date of approval. That's as of today, if approved, and who also live there at the time they get the notice to vacate. So the request would be to modify that, that second piece. So it's not at the time of the notice to vacate, but rather simply anytime they move after tonight, if approved.
And upon date of approval, as opposed to notice to vacate.
Right, upon date of approval.
And, and Matt, or let me say that, or, or it could be a, an extended notice period.
Or if, yeah, we can't get to.
That would be like four or six months maybe of a notice period rather than 60 days.
Right.
Instead of 60 days.
So, yeah, there's two sub-options there.
I would prefer if it was anytime afterward, but then we do have a situation that would occur where someone would move out, find a new place, be, if, if, if this was so approved, you know, if, if all of this goes forward. But then, then they, they're, that may be so early, because we do know that it may be two years plus before some of these units become available and people start getting notices, if I recall correctly. I wouldn't want the developer not to be able to re-rent those. We wouldn't want to take them off the market.
He can re-rent them.
Right, he'd be able to rent them. Right, right, I agree, but, but then they, but then the new renter wouldn't necessarily be eligible for a relocation plan.
Yeah, yeah, then you have to have language.
Can we bring language here?
Sorry, yeah. Yeah, it gets complicated if you start thinking like that. I've thought about it.
Microphone, please.
Do you want, your microphone's on. Do you want to finish, Ryan?
No, I, I just, those, those would be the options that I would think would, would suffice.
And it's two, two different choices there, two different sort of goals. If it's anytime that they move, any tenant as of tonight who moves, if approved tonight, who moves anytime thereafter, then that would protect them at any point. They would get all of these benefits as described. But if somebody left tomorrow and then someone else moved in, they would be unprotected. That is solved if instead of being anytime after tonight, rather it's if anybody gets a notice, you know, the developer must give no, six months notice to vacate if being vacated as a result of the project, and then that gives people six months of time to figure it out.
Now, I, I've worked with them, Jeff, we've worked on this a lot. I, I don't think there's anything that would, in my mind, make it impossible to do a six-month notice. I mean, these are all pretty much looking forward, right? So we would give them, then, instead of a 60-day, they'd have a six-month notice, and that would, that would, that would provide them ample opportunity to use their relocation benefits to try and help find something. And if it's not going to work in the project, then now, then that lends, the next question is, if, even if there is another unit available at the same level or higher level of affordability, and when I say higher, I mean going up the chain, right? Or a market rate one, even though we had it worked out that they would get that and pay the same rent for a year, if, if they don't want that unit, or they don't feel it's right for them, would they then be eligible for Part C of the one year of, of rent payback?
I'm so glad he's asking that.
And while they're conferring, that second piece could be accomplished by amending the final bullet in the plan on Page 4-89, which right now provides if no other unit is available, they get the 12 months of rent payment to provide, if no other unit is available or no unit is available which is accepted by the tenant, then they get the 12 months of rent.
Or it would be at the discretion of the tenant, Matt.
Something like that. We're, we're smithing, precise language to be confirmed, but so that's how that would be implemented. And it would leave, mean that on the flow chart on the screen, first in line at their affordability level or a larger unit, if desired, if they can cover the difference. If none available, then they're first in line for another unit, still at their level for one year. If none of those, or if they so choose, then 12 months of rent and cash.
Thank you, Matt.
But I would want to make sure, before we move off from this topic.
I'm sure I understand it, I'm sorry.
That the developer's okay with it.
Only because we were having two conversations at one time. So do you mind repeating again your, your dream?
So our, our modified proposal is, we'll cover both pieces. So first off, instead of the current requirement that it's 60 days' notice to vacate, that it be a six-month notice to vacate.
And this is only to current tenants, described as people who live at the cottages or Mallorys at, at the ti, at today.
Right. So people who live as of today, I guess that's a question for the council.
Yes.
Or if somebody leaves tomorrow and then someone moves in the next day, would they be protected? That's a question I'm seeing.
Not if, no.
No, okay. So it's, it's tenants who live there as of tonight, if, if all, if approved tonight, and the required six-month notice to vacate, that triggers all the protections. And so if somebody was approved tonight and somebody left tomorrow well before any notice to vacate, that's on their own. No protections.
Okay, now, this is what I want to ask about, what you just said, if I may.
I, I, now I heard the first, the first part of the wish.
That's the first part of the wish. Let me, let me add the second part of the wish. The second part of the wish is, at the end of the line, it's if no other unit is available or at the tenant's option, the developer will pay 12 months of current rent. So even if they might qualify for a unit, let's say they qualify for a low-income unit and it's available, and they just say, I don't want it, for whatever reason, fine, they get 12 months of rent and cash.
The, the problem with this, that piece, from my client's perspective, is it's a big question mark as far as the amount of liability. We don't know what that would mean. And if there's another unit available that matches their level of affordability and what they have now, then it seems appropriate to place them first in line in that, in that unit, instead of this option of, I mean, one of the benefits is, we like our tenants. We want to keep our tenants. We can transfer our tenant into another unit. Otherwise, we're left, we're looking for new tenants and for this other unit, and...
You guys can always do additional incentives to keep them as tenants. But the, but here, here's it, this is the problem, right? When you're going from low affordable to low affordable, from the old, from a cottage amongst the flowers, to one that's being developed, those two may not be equivalent units. They may be equivalent levels of rent, but that does not make them equivalent units. And for some of the people I was talking to, I don't believe they're going to be able to find a two-bedroom unit in the same manner. And if that's what their problem is, then how do we fix that?
Well, just to be clear.
Yeah.
The bedrooms is equivalent unit. So if they're at a two-bedroom unit, then they would be offered a two-bedroom unit. And if, if they don't take it, then we don't believe we should give a payout. But if we only have a one-bedroom unit available, then they have the option to move into a two-bedroom unit that's market rate for a year and will cover the difference in rent. That's my understanding of the deal as it stands. So if, if someone's in a two-bedroom unit now, they will get to get first in line.
Yes, but they would also be there for only a year. And that was one of the concerns that I'm trying to figure out, because that's difficult. Now, if we want to list it specifically as number of bedrooms, I do know, though, that any plans can get creative with what a room versus a bedroom looks like. And I don't like the idea of the ambiguity of that, if we can avoid it. But if we can make that specific enough that it can be worked out, then that's okay. But, you know, some of these tenants may, you know, what, what I'm hearing is that they want, they know it's going to be tough to find another place. And they don't want to find a place for a year. They want to find a place that they don't have to worry about in a year of their rent going from whatever it currently is to that, what might be an extensive amount if they're in a two-bedroom and it's at market rate. So they could be living somewhere now that's $2,000, and it could go up to $4,500. And they know that they're going to have that year ticking away. They may be able to pay the same rent they used to, but they're going to have that year ticking away. And that, that puts them in a tough spot. They won't be able to use the whole year. They won't get the full benefit of it because they know at the end of that year, they've got to get out because they can't afford it anymore. So I'm trying to find some solution for that. And I apologize for bringing this up late. I know it's not the best way we could have done it, but you guys know it's, the best thing's happened right when we're on the deadline, right? So I'm trying to figure out that solution to the problem. Like, how does that person figure that out and not be living under the guillotine? And then, you know, three months in, they finally find a place, they're not staying there for the whole year. Now they're moving out. They don't necessarily have the benefit of that year's rent that is being covered, you know, it's being subsidized to be the same amount, because they found that, finally that place that they think in a year they can afford, so they got to move out. Well, they got three months of that same rent, but they didn't get a relocation package. They didn't get some of those other benefits that would make it a lot easier on them.
So they, what they did get is a six-month notice that, that a move is going to happen, and then a year, potentially at a market rate, two-bedroom, to also, you know, at the, at their level.
But the six-month doesn't make any difference if the only benefit they're going to get is to move into the unit you're going to provide them. The six months then doesn't give them, they can look for other places, but they can't move in, because they can't necessar, they could do it, but they won't get any relocation package. That's the difference, right? So they, the six-month doesn't help them that much. It'll help them find a new unit, but then they would have, really, other than the $2,000 move-out fee, they would have no other relocation benefits.
Yeah. The trouble is, then we could be in a situation where we're, instead of minor tenant turnover, we end up, which is what the plan has always been, because that's why we did the phasing, that's why we've got this tenant relocation package. Now we have massive potential tenant turnover, people taking payouts, and so that's, I, I'm thinking out loud here without having spoken.
Right, but you're getting the benefit of the non-subsidy on that unit for the next year. It cuts both ways. Yeah, you're paying one flat rate, but you're getting to rent it out and making up some of that money at the new market rate, or whatever that affordability rate is that you would have had to reduce that before. So there's a give and a take.
I think my clients and I are going to marinate on this question slash query. I think that we are open to the six months, I can say at this point, so, and, and appreciate and understand the reason for it. And I appreciate, understand the reason. You were talking with many tenants and you, you care. You're trying to take care of them. They're also trying to manage their business. So I will marinate and get back to you.
May I add something?
Well, we're still, we're still on questions from council, so Randy and then Suzie.
On that same point.
Because Randy hasn't spoken yet. Let's go, can we take turns?
Okay, so I, what I'm hearing, and, and I agree with, but I think there's another way, maybe a simpler way of looking at it, and that's trying to provide certainty. Right now, there's a lot of gray, and there's a lot of ifs, and there's, if I do this, I get that. If I do this, I get this. If I do that, I get that. So what I'm hearing in the certainty side of it is that we keep all of these agreements in place, and that what we do is we look at all 33 units or all units that are going to be impacted, and we just say that we are going to pay you your rent for a year. And that way, they know what money is going out. And then we're going to say that we are going to give you that $2,000, up to $2,000 for your relocation. That's probably the only gray, but that's what I'm hearing right now. So it's certainty. If there's 25 people and they're all paying $1,000 a month, you know that that's going to be $250,000 gone, or whatever that comes out to, okay? But that's certainty, a certainty for the renter and a certainty for the developer. That's what I'm hearing, and I think that's, unless I'm not hearing that, but I'm, but what it does is it gives, and this is the whole premise of this discussion and this agreement, is to empower the people that might be evicted, moved, or whatever we choose to call it, an opportunity to find something that fits their needs immediately so that they don't have to play move to move to move. This just gives them certainty. You can do whatever you want, this is what you're going to receive from us. How you use it, and then you can either apply it to first in line, or this, or this, or this. And I agree with Ryan, whether they re-rent into your facilities, there's, there's a lack of housing in Ojai. I don't think you'll ever find a moment where someone's not looking to pay you to rent a room month-to-month in this community right now. So I think it's a win, and it just gives the people that are in Mallory and the cottages certainty, a financial certainty, and it still gives them what's in our agreement. That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. So through the mayor, Councilmember, just, I'll treat that as a question. I, I do have one reaction, I have not spoken to my clients about this. Honestly, this is part of the reason we're here. It's like creep, 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 creep. And it's just another, to say, pay, look at the last box, which is not expected due to the phasing plan. We put a phasing plan forward where we're putting all the market rates last, they're building that last, they're building the affordable first. It's just, it's a constant drip, drip, drip. You've gotten a lot out of this deal, and...
We'd be remiss if we didn't ask for more.
You would be. You have not been remiss. Let me just say, this city has not been remiss in this negotiation. So I have not talked to my clients about it, but I will tell them, they have many options to, you know, develop this property. And I'll tell you, I'm dealing with people who, when I talk to them about all the things that they left on the table here and all the ways that they didn't have to do what they did, it makes them feel like they maybe didn't have the fairest deal and maybe regret. So that's why I started my last letter, saying the benefit is, we have a magic moment where they're still here, willing to deal with you. I think if you keep coming back and back, you, you risk them walking again. So I just, my one suggestion, beware. But I will marinate and discuss with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. We're, we're still on questions from council? More questions? Suzie, you have a question?
I, I just want to make sure that Beth is aware how desperate the situation is, perhaps also in other commu, I know it is also in other communities, but in Ojai, if you go to a, a home, a house for, the homes-for-rent site, there are people booking a house even like six months from now. You know, people are advertising that their house will be available next spring, you know, and people can't find a room to rent. They can't find, they can't, there's nothing, there's nothing. I mean, there's nothing affordable. And, and that plays into this. I mean, if the, the current tenant agreement is, I think, good for the developer as well, because it guarantees the, the flow of, of rent. So...
Is there a question?
The question is, yeah, I would like to make it even stronger, but let's see how far we get with this. Yeah.
Okay. Let's, let's stick, stick to questions. Randy, you have a question?
I have questions, yes. We keep, in, in the discussions, we keep going at the low-income level. Can we bring that slide up on the, the levels of income? If we can? We'll have to, we'll have to jump, yeah. Yeah, there you go. Thank you, James. So very low income, up to $43,900. Let's just make it 44, easy for discussion. Oh, boy, I had my, I had this down. When, again, Suzie, you're right. When it's up there, we need to talk. But, so it goes up to $43,000. I think I keep hearing that, well, I don't, here it is, I don't make $96,000 a year. I keep hearing that. And it's, it was in almost every email that we, we received today, it was like, I don't make $96,000 a year. I don't know what the $96,000 a year threshold is, other than it's at the moderate level. But if, if I'm making less than $43,000 a year, and maybe staff can answer this or not, but, and the, and the rent is going to be $878.
Up to.
Up to, thank you.
Important to say that.
Thank you. Okay, up to, okay? If I can't make the up to number, can I get subsidized somehow, some way, either through can I get subsidized somehow, some way, either through a Section 8 voucher, through, isn't there ways for me to enhance my ability to rent one of these units by using money outside of what I generate on a personal income level?
Yes. The up-to $878 would be the rent amount that is charged by the developer. That's the subsidized rent level. You can stack on top of that with any rental assistance program that you can, that one can benefit from. Section 8, if the developer agrees to use Section 8, which I don't believe he's opposed to in the past, any other rental assistance programs, there's occasional grant programs, nonprofits, any sort of program that exists on top can be stacked up.
Yeah. That's what I was thinking, because I keep hearing that, no, I can't afford this. But I'm saying, what I'm thinking to myself, well, if you're generating, if you're making $30,000 a year, and 30% of that is going to go to my rent, you know, on a good day, and I can't do that, how can I, you know, what agencies are out there that are available to me to access to get additional funding for rent? I don't like using this. I have to, I'm going to use it, because you're the only one I know that's done it.
Tell you all about it.
But Suzie, for instance, got a voucher for up to $18,000.
Wait, wait, wait.
Whatever. Let's say, let's say you got it for 1,500. I'm not going to hold any number. But she, so, so, 1,800, I'm sorry. So, she had the ability, if she found a house for rent at 2,000, that her voucher would have covered 1,800 of that, and Suzie would have had to find the $200. That's what I'm trying to say here. We keep, I keep getting locked into this fear that, oh, my God, I don't make $96,000 a year, therefore, I'll never be able to rent here in Ojai. And the reality is, there's a lot of agencies, and I'm asking you folks, maybe a lot, maybe two or three--
No, there's not.
But that will help--
The waiting list.
That will help support individuals that need it. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yeah. Nothing in this agreement precludes anybody from getting one of those alternative sources of help, yeah?
Okay.
And we recognize there's not as many of those alternative sources as there should be, but nothing in the agreement prohibits anyone from using them.
Okay. And then, my last, my last question is, we really haven't said what happens on the 10-year agreement. What happens to the people that are in the, that are renting under this 10-year program in the 10 years expires?
For the cottages?
Are they now?
So, it depends on which units are in. The folks who are in the 27 affordable units, at 10 years, nothing changes. 45 more years of rent protection, 45 more years of effectively baked-in subsidy, because it's a 55-year restriction. It will only be 10 years in.
Timeout. I thought the 10-year restriction was on a different set of units. I thought the 27 were earmarked completely for 55.
Exactly, they are.
And that now, there's another set of units that are fixed at a fixed rate for 10 years. Am I correct?
They're not fixed rate, they're fixed rental. So, the other 10 units are tenant cottages that are required to be rentals, not sold separately for 10 years. So, the amount of rent is set, as set by the developer and state law, but they have to be rented. They can't be sold, despite the fact that they're, that they are condo-mapped.
So, at the end of 10 years--
At the end of 10 years-- They can be sold.
The management group has, can either continue renting or cancel.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you, Matt. Any other questions from council?
I'll save my comments for discussion.
Okay. Well, let's take a five-minute break, and then we will come back with public speakers.
Okay, we're back. We're going to begin with public comment. Can we come to quiet, please? Can we come to quiet, please? Thank you. Let's begin with Grace Malloy, then John Buetti, and then Sabrina Venskus. Weston?
Hello.
Was it on?
Yep.
Okay.
Maybe. Good evening, council members. First off, a lot of fresh stuff thrown in here, so I now would be like, how can you make a decision tonight with all this new information on the table? Maybe a continuance might be a good idea on this. But I'm going to read what I have here. "Good evening, council members. As you consider passing this complicated development agreement tonight and taking one more step in the gentrification race here in Ojai, please consider these two thoughts. One, about this assumption that the Becker Group would evict the residents of the cottages should this agreement not go through. Perhaps your understanding of their character is better than mine, and you know this to be true. I want to state for the record, however, that there are many landlords, maybe hundreds in this valley, who are intentionally not raising rents to market value and who are renting to longtime residents of Ojai who are low-income to try to combat this gentrification pattern because, like Mr. Becker, they don't need this money to be happy and healthy. Perhaps we could create a registry of low and very low affordable housing that landlords have committed to keeping that way, possibly even did restrict them. If Mayor Styx could have her way, the only new multifamily housing permitted in Ojai would be 100% affordable units at low and very low rates, which, yes, would mean a nonprofit housing trust to fund those projects. Did I hear that's a part of Councilmember Haney's reelection platform? You've all said you like that idea, so let's do it. I personally would love to commit to annual or semi-annual self-taxing of either my property value or annual income to give to this housing trust, so we never end up in this situation again. And I'm happy to peer pressure a lot of people to do that. Number two, I implore you to include in the record for this agreement some sort of significant acknowledgement of the displacement of these residents. I think there are two ways that the city could do this, or could require this, of the Becker Group. One is fund the independent income survey that should have been done six months ago to accurately understand how many of the residents who won't get one of the seven low or very low-income units can actually afford an equivalent moderate-income unit. My semi-educated guess is 22 or 23 will be without housing. This is not totally irrelevant, as the developer's lawyer said tonight. It's relevant to those tenants to have their reality acknowledged. Or two, donate the money you would have used on this essential study to help of Ojai, the employees of which will do everything they can to find housing for the likely about 20 evicted residents who can't afford the moderate units after their year of paid rent. The helpers can't find local affordable housing for many of the folks who need it today, so I don't know how they will for all those additional people, but at least pay everyone the respect of recognizing the true human impacts of this messy deal. In closing, the people who live in these cottages are some of Ojai's most incredible creatives. To give a couple examples of how special their contributions are to our community and what they've meant to me, my husband and I fell in love over Fran Gieler's delectable baked goods at Farmer and the Cook, and Anita Cram's magical lotion was the very first thing to touch my baby's skin other than the hands of our family. These women and the other people in these cottages are sacred members of this community, and their eviction from their homes needs to be properly recognized. Council members, please include in your motions tonight one or two, or both of these two tangible recognitions of their eviction, instead of continuing to posture like 20 of them will be able to afford the moderate-rate units offered. Thank you."
Thank you, Grace. Next, we have John Buetti, and then Sabrina Venskus, and then Judy Murphy.
Good evening, council members. In last week's city council meeting, Mr. Haney mentioned wanting to join the mayor's train to affordable housing. It's a train he said he wants to get on with her. He also mentioned workforce housing being something he enthusiastically supports. I'll get back to the train in a minute. The Ojai Valley Democratic Club, which Mr. Haney is a member of, published what they call a 10-point compact with Ojai for a more livable city. Number two of that compact, and therefore the second most important point in that compact, has to do with affordable housing. It mentions the desire to, quote, "protect existing rentals." Let me say that again. Quote, "protect existing rentals." If the second most important point of that compact is to protect existing rentals, then why did Mr. Haney vote to approve the Becker Agreement? That agreement does not protect existing rentals. It eliminates them. So, Mr. Haney and the other city council candidates endorsed by the Democratic Club, which supports the Becker Agreement, and includes Ms. Rule, Ms. Roth, and Mr. Williams, the train that you chose to board was not the train that protects affordable housing. It is the train that encourages and supports gentrification.
Thank you, John. Next, we have Sabrina Venskus, then Judy Murphy, and then Julia Weisman.
I'm Sabrina Venskus. I'm an environmental land use attorney. I live at 407 Drown Avenue. I own a home there. I'm also a landlord, and I rent my unit for, I think it's low-income. I disagree very strongly with the city attorney's evaluation of where we will be with the status quo. The status quo is there are expired entitlements. That's currently the status quo. Thus, if the developer is, does not get the development agreement, then he will have to go and apply for entitlements again. That will require him to comply with the housing, affordable housing ordinance. If the city council does not allow the developer to get out of complying with the affordable housing ordinance through this DA, that is, the development agreement, then the developer would be required to provide, based on the evidence that we have today that is attached to my letter that I submitted to you today, from tenants that live there currently as to their household income level, the developer will be required to provide 15 low-income units instead of only the seven that we are getting now. And that's just based on the information that we have from the tenants. There's a lot of other units that we could, that people could not get to today to talk to the tenants about. So, if you require them to comply with the affordable housing ordinance, you can require him to provide for double the low-income housing, plus you can require a tenant protection package, a relocation package, for those that need to be relocated pursuant to your municipal code section 10-2.904A3, which gives the city council incredible discretion and power to require what they think they need to require in order to ensure the affordable housing and affordability in the city of Ojai. As to SEQA, there were a lot of new exemptions that were raised today. We have not had a chance to evaluate them. I heard infill. It's not an infill development. Infill is actually defined by the state, OPR, as land that is unused or underutilized. And I don't think anyone could say today that Mallory Way or cottages is unused or underutilized. It's actually low-income housing. To me, that is the most precious of utilization of land, to provide housing for people of low income and extremely low income like we have there. Also, what the city attorney hasn't told you is a development agreement requires an EIR under the code, and I've presented the code section there in my letter today. The city attorney also hasn't told you about SEQA Section 21166, or SEQA Guideline 15162, which provides that the city council discretion to require subsequent environmental review when environmental conditions have changed demonstrating potentially significant impacts may result. I want to point out that Mr. Wierich mentioned that the track map, there are track map approvals. Those track map approvals have expired. Also, Mr. Blatts said, I don't think he meant to say that we are stuck with prior approvals. I think what he meant to say was that there is an argument that we're stuck with the prior approvals.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I object to that. Three minutes for everybody.
All right. Thank you very much, Sabrina. Much appreciated.
You don't have a point of order.
No, you're not recognized.
It's up to the mayor.
Yeah. Yes.
So, point of order.
If you're going to speak, Mr. Francis, go to the microphone. We have to be on the video. I would note that, has Mr. Francis submitted a comment card?
No.
Or is he being taken out of order? That would be subject to the council's review.
There is a comment.
All right. Then I'd suggest we recommend starting the timer.
Take it off.
I want to raise a point of order. It's not my talking points. It's a point of order.
You're not a member of the council. Only the council can raise points of order.
Next, we have Judy Murphy. Yep.
Is it true that the track map approval has expired?
No, that is incorrect. The track map approval was recorded in 2010. The recording of the track map for the cottages affected the creation of the condo units, the airspace units. It is not expired. It was accomplished. The expiration issue is of the related design review approval for the proposed project at cottages, which the city's present position is that it has expired, but the application to extend it is pending and would be approved by the development agreement if that were to be approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have Judy Murphy, then Julia Weisman, and then Tom Francis.
Good evening, mayor, council, staff. The last, well, not the last, the July meeting found us trying to defend the development agreement from historical claims, from traffic claims, from water claims, from tree claims, you name it. Now, we have moved on to some new arguments, and happily, I am not an attorney, and I am not going to go into the weeds on those arguments. But I do trust what our attorney, city attorney, Mr. Matthews, Mr. Summers says. I want to congratulate the people who have worked for years on this project, and I certainly hope that it gets a yes vote, and we can get started on it at long last. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Next, we have Julia Weisman, then Tom Francis, and then Elle Caldwell.
Are these for me?
They're for everybody. I didn't know I was supposed to make copies. I'm sorry. Hi. Thank you for finally talking to some tenants at cottages and at Mallory. And no, I'm not going to be able to go and get everyone's income from 2017. I don't have a time machine. So, I give you this. You're going to need to know, anyway, how these people are going to be affected. All you have are Becker's claims from 2019. He has his income statements that are incorrect, and I took the care to go back and get statements from nine of the tenants of the 26, sorry, been walking around all day. He said 26 of the tenants are moderate income, and I know that nine of those are directly incorrect. I know two of the people who lived there in 2019 personally. They are very low-income now. They were very low-income in 2019, or whenever the survey was handed to the city. So, Becker just gets to get away with that, and maybe nobody cares, but I found one extremely low-income tenant, 10 very low-income tenants, and three low-income tenants. I found zero median, moderate, or market-rate tenants. Suze is right. This is a desperate situation. I'm really grateful that you're asking a lot of questions tonight, and I look forward to hearing how it hashes out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Tom Francis, then Elle Caldwell, and then Larry Steingold.
Good evening, Mayor Styx and council. Again, I want to thank you for your service and to our community. I do appreciate all of you, even though I don't agree with you. First, I'm going to speak on behalf of a local nonprofit organization called Simply Ojai. Simply Ojai again requests that the city council deny this proposed development agreement due to the fact that more than half of the proposed units are planned to be market-rate and therefore likely to only serve those that are wealthy. Due to state mandates, all accessory dwelling units that are being permitted and built in Ojai are market-rate and being constructed at a rate that is on pace to meet our regional housing needs assessment requirements. In addition, the city has allowed the opportunity for 20 tiny home pads to be constructed in our city, and per council majority direction are also allowed to command market-rate rents. Simply Ojai incorporates by reference Venskus and Associates' comments and those other public comments urging a no vote on the proposed development agreement before you today. That completes my comments on behalf of Simply Ojai. Now, speaking into the record on behalf of myself, Tom Francis, as an individual, I oppose the proposed development agreement. I hereby incorporate by reference Venskus and Associates' comments and those other public comments urging a no vote on the proposed development agreement before you today. The other comment that I have just relates to this process. I think it's a sham that you guys basically have city staff present promoting the development agreement, then you have the developer's attorney present promoting the development agreement, then you have Mr. Blatts and Mr. Wierich, who have been negotiating for three years, promoting the development agreement. And then you have an expert attorney that walks up here, and you only, won't even ask her a couple of questions so she can give you precious information that would help you make an informed decision. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have Elle Caldwell, then Larry Steingold, then Dee Reed.
For 15 years, I've loved living in the Mallory cottages. I've lived in three different units. I'm one of those long-term tenants who has known since I moved in that eventually there would be a development, and I would have to leave. All of us who have lived there that long, or not even necessarily that long, know that. It's sad, it's sad that the time is coming now that we're going to probably have to leave. My community and my life are here in Ojai. It is scary and a worry whether there will be any place here that I will be able to afford to rent ongoingly. I am very grateful for the assistance the Becker Group is offering to help us. Even if this plan isn't perfect, I think it will make a big difference to those of us who live there. I urge the council to approve this project and secure this assistance. I have two wishes. One is that the Becker Group keep our rent as it currently is until the project is developed and we have another place to move. Otherwise, we can simply be priced out of the cottages we currently live in, and I haven't heard anything that would protect us from that. My other wish is that we would have again on the table the buyout option, because that gives so many more opportunities to find a long-term place to be. The real crisis that's here is that no housing has been built here, especially no low and very low housing. That's the reason we're in this dilemma. So, it's really important that all of us who are in this situation, and all of the people in the community who care about us and others, get to work now on getting this housing built. Let's get right to work with Bill Miley and Judy Murphy and the other experts on housing here in town, and let's build affordable housing on all levels that's sustainable and will make a place for everyone who needs a house to live in. Let's keep Ojai, Ojai, by making room for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Caldwell. Next, we have Larry Steingold, then Dee Reed, and then Jeffrey Starkweather.
The reason you have no housing in Ojai is because the people simply haven't approved it. It's very simple. If you build it, people will come. So, therefore, all these people who say, oh, we can't have anything, it's a no. We blame it on water. We blame it on the air. We blame it on the trees. But whatever it is, it's still no. We're not going to have affordable housing because there's not enough of it, or it's not cheap enough. If somebody wants to throw in more money to get this to happen, you can get it done and just make it happen. They just have to make decisions. But I'm more concerned about this shadow group that they've been hanging around here for 10, 20 years, and every time something shows up, they pop up, oh, no, we can't have housing. This has been on the table for how many years? Seven years? Five years? 15 years? All of a sudden, they're here? Where are they? Where are the suggestions? You want to be supported by Simply Ojai? Fine, let them be productive. Let them stick their nose under the tent and say, hey, why don't we do 22 units instead of 23? Why don't we do this? Why don't we do that? Everything is a no. Well, if you don't build anything now, you won't build anything in five years because you don't have the guts to stand up and get it done. This is bullshit.
Thank you, Larry. Dee Reed, then Jeffrey Starkweather, and then Anita Cram.
Well, on that note, I'd like to start by thanking you for the guts that you do have, and I really do appreciate it. I know this has been a tremendous amount of work, a tremendous amount of time, and that it is not easy. It's painful for everybody concerned. I also want to say to the man who said affordable housing causes gentrification, actually, I can point you to a number of studies that say it is exactly the opposite. The reason we are having gentrification is a supply and demand problem. It's not having affordable housing, not having enough housing, period, that causes it. I don't have much to add to what Ms. Caldwell said so beautifully. She lives there. She's known for years about this. Yes, it's painful to have to leave, but she recognizes that we don't have enough housing in this town. In fact, what I'd like to say to Beth Collins and Mr. Becker is, even if you had 100% turnover because people didn't find what they wanted, you're not going to have a problem renting out what you're building. It's in high demand. We don't have enough. So, I'll just repeat what I said last week, which is, you know, we can't call it Shangri-La if we keep turning our backs on the people who work here and make Ojai great. Some of them live in the flowers and cottages. Some of them don't live anywhere near Ojai, and they never will, although they would love to. They deserve to be a part of this community, and what you are doing tonight, I hope, is taking a small step, but a very important step, to start the process of providing a range of housing at different price points, including housing that's affordable to people at low income and very low income. I'd like to see a lot more of the very low income, too, and I think we'll need a public-private partnership at the very least to get that started, and I look forward to talking with all of you about that at some point, and with any new members of the council or in the mayor's seat. So, just thank you again for everything you've done, and you're going in the right direction.
Thank you, Dee. Next, we have Jeffrey Starkweather, then Anita Cram, and then Matty Gadsby.
Thank you, city council and mayor. And I agree, there's been incredible hard work, and I can see all of you are struggling to try to make the best of the situation. Since someone referenced our 10-point compact, I have to read the whole thing because he meant read one sentence. Preserve and expand workforce housing. Appoint citizens commission to research and develop strategies to protect existing rentals and to add new multifamily, low-income, and workforce housing near schools, business, and transit. and transit. The whole thing that's being pushed there is that we actually need citizens to come together to work with you and a commission that would actually look at all the potential strategies. What I always see is everybody jumps to their own solution to the problem without us really analyzing the problem itself. And I want Simp'li Ohi to be in that room. Make them make positive suggestions that they have them. Secondly, and as my wife, Debra, said, but I gave you the article last time, the supply skeptics are completely wrong by any studies that have ever been done. Market-rate, in fact, luxury apartments do not increase the price of housing. That study showed that when you built luxury apartments, that places near them actually moderated their price. Supply and demand is like climate change. It's a law of nature. If you don't believe people are skeptical about climate change, then why are they skeptical about the law of supply and demand? Infill, okay. I was talking about how a planner talks about infill, not as a lawyer who's looking at some technical thing. Let me give you the description. What is infill housing? It's everything from small interior renovations for an in-law suite to detached guest houses and small multi-unit buildings that fit into neighborhoods with increasing density. It's everything that we've been talking about is a form of infill. And I would point out that the private market really can't do the very low and the extremely low. Who is going to put a deed restriction on their ADU for the extremely low and the very low for 55 years? Nobody. Who's going to put the very low and extremely low in their houses and give them lower rent than they need to pay for their expenses? Nobody's going to do that. If we want that group to get housing, we need to work with nonprofits, get HUD money, so forth, to go forward. So as you're finishing, as you're thinking about tonight, think about the consequences of this. We have a win-win, and if we don't go with this, we have a lose-lose. So please, go with a win-win, and let's get this community going forward and developing housing for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Next, we have Anita Cram, then Matty Gadsby, and then Kelsey Jonker.
Okay, so I was never told about this when I moved in. So into the weeds, the sequoia exemption to the state of California, in Craig Walker's words, a blatant falsification of official document page 269 for tonight's agenda, says the project applicant intends to keep the exterior of the existing dwelling units unchanged with the exception of some paint and any necessary minor repairs. This is for cottages among the Flowers, and that's the falsification to the state of California. San Buenaventura Historical Report says that the proposed new construction does not conform with important elements of the Secretary of Interior Standards, which says, the report says, "The treatment of historic fabric and the removal of important character-defining elements of the buildings is..." Whoops. "Character-defining elements of the buildings are changed in this proposal." Okay, so I've been in communication with the Housing and Community Development Department in Sacramento outlining concerns, especially of this being in conflict with the housing element of the city of Ohi. They have said that, because in that housing element, the state of California requires that the city not, that the city put particular emphasis on the needs of persons and families of lower-income households, and those were special needs, which there are in the cottages and Mallory Way. The city is also required to replace, by the state, required to replace housing for low-income community members that is lost. This development does not replace the housing for low-income residents that is lost, it takes away. So some numbers. In the city's 2021 to 2029 housing element, and these are goals, and the progress is progress as of 2021. Extremely low, objective 44 units, progress zero, development zero. Very low, objective 43, progress zero as of 2021, development one. Low income, 59, progress as of 2021, zero, development six. Moderate, objective was 70, progress 70, development will add 20 of those. So this project will take the numbers for progress and three low-income tiers into the negative. So the state has said, John Bootner, the Housing Accountability Manager, Housing Policy Division, Housing and Community Development in Sacramento, California, says, "I have passed your information over to our housing element team for review. Ohi has adopted their housing element but are currently out of compliance. So we will make sure to bring this up once we receive an updated draft from Ohi. We will also review your information for any potential violations and reach out as necessary. I am in the very low-income tier. I am being displaced by this project, and there's no guarantee you will house me. I'm glad you're looking at tenant relocation because it's skewed against the tenants currently."
Thank you, Anita. Next, we have Matty Gadsby.
Mayor, can I just quickly reply to the statement that the city's out of compliance on its housing element? So just so everybody understands, when the city adopts its housing element, there's a few steps in the process for the city to adopt it and then for the state to review it. And then the state can either accept the plan, or typically, they send back the housing element with some recommended modifications. The city of Ohi has adopted the housing element. We did send it to the state. The state's reviewed it. They have sent back some recommended edits, which are very minor, essentially related to wording of some things like our Tiny House Pilot Program. So we now are going to review that with the Planning Commission and the City Council and then send it back. And there is a website called the FairHousingElements.org website that tracks all the housing element statuses. And in Southern California, because we review the housing element after Northern California, most of Southern California is in the same stage we are in. So the statement, I think, was intended to imply that the city is somehow out of compliance and not updating the housing element. We are in the process of updating it with all the other cities in Southern California. And I'd also say I did review that letter from HCD, and it's a pretty standard-form letter that they send whenever somebody sends a complaint. It's just saying that they'll look into it. So there was no confirmation of any issue, and we don't expect it to be a loss of housing units because it's not a loss of deed-restricted housing units, it's actually a gain of deed-restricted housing units.
Thank you, James. All right, Matty Gadsby.
Hi. Thank you all for your dedication and endurance. I want to support the comments of my neighbor, Elle Caldwell. I appreciate them. I also just want to say, since people talk about all the delays, a lot of these delays were not the city or people protesting, the developer also delayed, and there is a reason that permits expire because things change. So now you're being threatened with litigation, but I just want to say that, you know, not all these delays were the community or the councils. My comments are about, specifics about the project. And regarding Mallory Way, my comment would be, an improvement in the project would be no through roads. Eucalyptus and summer are designed to become through roads. This would get rid of three basically dead-end neighborhoods, or dead-end, is that how we call it? You know, the street's a dead end. And I would hope that would be a simple design change, I don't know, but also I think it could improve permeability of the project because there's an awful lot of development and pavement and concrete going in current open spaces. Let's see. And to revisit the Luminaire Plan on Mallory Way, that is all a dark sky area. And this is one of those things that I think does become, people start becoming more aware of those things. Ohi is amazing with dark sky, even right out here. And Mallory is very dark. The whole surrounding neighborhood is dark because I go walking at night, take my little flashlight like our neighbors do. But the Luminaire Plan has seven footposts, they're good, you know, they have, the tops are covered, but it turns it into kind of a suburban, I know that light creates some protection and safety, but I would ask someone to really look at that area at night and see if there's some improvements that could be made in the lighting plan. Also, birds, you know, we have nocturnal birds and owls, so that that would be a big improvement. Regarding the cottages, I'm a little confused because it says historic features would be repaired instead of replaced, but what are those historic features? Because I don't think that's very clear. My understanding from people like Craig Walker involved in the history and people, other people I've talked to that are experts, doors and windows are historic features, but now I'm wondering if we're all speaking the same language. So a little more clarity, you know, my preference would be there would be more restoration than renovation, but I understand, you know, it's not all what I decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Matty. Next, we have Kelsey Jonker, and then Carol Wade, and then Teal Rowe.
Hello, my name is Kelsey Jonker. Mayor Sticks, as in the last meeting, I expect you to make a motion to deny this project on the basis of climate and water. And at the last meeting, you called for a scientific study into anthropogenic, climate-driven aridification, and you asked that we lean into science. I grew up in Ohi. I remember hearing my parents talk about the Mallory Way bungalows when I was in elementary school attending Miramonte. To give you a reference of how long ago that was, I am now 31 years old. I left Ohi to go to college. I majored in environmental science and philosophy. I lived in Germany for a year in the Black Forest where I studied forest and soil ecology, environmental policy, and renewable energy solutions. My mom majored in biology with an emphasis on ecology. My brother majored in physics with an emphasis on environmental science. And when he was in high school, he hand-built a wind turbine for his senior project from completely raw materials. I say this to emphasize that my family cares deeply about the environment. But the reality is that we now have technologies available that allow us to reduce our carbon footprint, and none of these exist at the current sites. They were never intended to be year-round dwellings. The Mallory bungalows were built as short-term seasonal hunting cabins, and their construction reflects that. They have no insulation in the ceilings or in the walls, and they have single-pane windows. They have window unit ACs, which we know are incredibly inefficient, so you couple that with a complete lack of insulation, and we're likely looking at some of the least energy-efficient housing options in the entire city. Our goal with this project is to go beyond what the code simply requires in terms of environmental issues and create housing that is mindful of our environment. We seek to reduce water usage, implement recapture techniques, and take advantage of all possible efficiencies. So if we are to lean into science, as you suggest, then we should move forward with the renovation, the rehabilitation, and the building of new, green, efficient housing options for all socioeconomic levels. To leave these units in their current state is not to benefit the client, the climate. A motion to deny this agreement is a motion to deny science. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Next, we have Carol Wade, and then Teal Rowe.
Hi.
Ms. Carol.
Yes. Hi, thank you, and I appreciate also all of your work and the time that you put into this. I also appreciate all of you for coming and caring enough, and I appreciate that people are considering housing, even though not everyone agrees on how that proposal should go forward. So as I'm thinking about this and as I'm listening, I have some questions that I'd like for you all to consider and all of us to consider, too. One of them is that when we think about housing and we look at accessibility and availability, we have to think about that for the general population, the whole general population, not only certain socioeconomic layers and only small pieces for what ends up being the greatest part of the socioeconomic layers. When we have, when we look at housing, one of the things that people consider or are looking at are the way that they're looking at the whole process of owning a house is whether or not it's an investment as opposed to a prospective home. And is that, my question is, is that a sustainable way to look at housing? If we look at housing as investment, is it something that should be unchecked? How do we go about determining what is a sustainable market rate for a house? What is sustainability? These are all questions that we, that have answers, and I don't have time to really go into them. Some of the things that are faced by the people that are building are issues that are cost, that have to do with planning and permitting, the whole process that we have now for trying to build houses, even if we wanted to build something that is accessible to the general public. When you look at housing, should your portfolio look at housing as part of your investment? Is it housing or is it homes? You know, like, these are, look at whether or not where you're considering the fact that these are places where people live. When you look at the idea of having to commute distances, we are, you've already had raised to you the idea of commuting, the impact on the cost, the time, the fuel. We have to recognize that we, as humans, are part of the environment. We have to recognize the stress that is involved with not being able to afford where you live, not being able to afford where you want to live, not, and we're not talking about mini mansions when we're looking at that. When you look at stress and the impact on health, there's a lot of cost on the culture as well when you look at health things, health issues. Finally, I would like to say that we have to look at our bodies and minds and spirits. We have to look at what it means to have to worry about your families and where they're going to live, whether your children are going to be able to afford to live near you. All of those things are important as you're looking at all of this. So thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Next, we have Teal Rowe.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here and all of your service, everybody. Thank you also for the ad hoc committee to be asking questions at the 11th hour and under the deadline, what I heard you say. It must be really tough. And also making this decision from based on the last meeting when I heard somebody say they feel like they have a gun to their head. And I'm asking the council, slow this baby down, please, because one of the things is cumulative impacts aren't only visible, and cumulative impacts affect all of us with new developments. And when she was talking about the dead-end roads and the cement and everything that's been said tonight, I mean, I'm not going to go into all of that, but that does affect us as citizens, too. And watching these meetings and being involved in these meetings, one of the things that goes through my mind is, how many people are watching this meeting right now that may have sequoia exemptions from 15 years ago, 10 years ago, however many years ago, projects that are sitting in the files right now? Does anybody know what that is? That's one of my questions for you, is this is setting a precedent to opening that up? That idea of, yeah, we need housing, at the same time, the concern of paving over Ohi. So my heart does go out to all the people and to the developers, to everybody. It can't be easy, but also, this thing isn't just slowing, slowing, slowing along. This is like, I hear you guys saying that you have guns to your head and stuff, so how great can decisions be made under that? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Teal. Weston, any comments on Zoom?
Yes, Mayor. Next, we have Diane, followed by Susan Miley and Mark Wile. Diane, you have the floor. All right. Next, we'll have Susan Miley. Susan, you have the floor.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, for the record, my name is Susan Miley. My dad is Bill Miley. My family's lived in Ohi Valley for 55 years. Tonight, I'm reading my dad's speech tonight. Tonight, I'm reading my dad's speech tonight. Zoom webinar meeting information button.
Susan, we lost you.
Okay, I got, the host put me on mute. There was some back, back noise. I'm reading my dad's speech tonight as he's recovering from heart valve surgery. He fully supports this four-part development project. He's reviewed the YouTube transcript of the October 18th meeting for public presentation themes and read the many emails. Here are his comments. Number one, since none of the cottages or Mallory are deed restricted now, this plan will, will create 27 new or rehabbed 55-year-deeded rental affordable living homes. Number two, about 14 speakers clearly stated they were in support of this plan. There were five speakers who commented on the water situation. On July 12th, there were 14. Number three, one issue which seems misunderstood is the level of affordability existing at Mallory Way. Most are moderate level. The 2019 tenant survey of Mallory and cottages, which missed some tenants, showed the annual income for current tenants, most were in the moderate category. Number four, several public comments focused on losing affordable numbers in this replacement plan. They stated there would be a net loss. There is no net loss. A total of 27 deeded homes will be built or rehabbed. Mallory Way is the, is only part requiring replacement, sorry, Mallory Way is the only part requiring replacement ordinance enforcement, and this is 25 units. The revised development agreement increased the number of new or remodeled units to 27. Five, public commentary themes have changed significantly from the 712 hearing. Few on water this time, concern for more lower, low-income units in Ojai, general concern for rental squeeze, concern for good tenant protection and relocation where possible, newer CEQA, state income levels for affordable housing too high, historical protection where possible, and workforce housing. In ending, we need to be kind to folks in our city who are and can become rent burdened or home deprived. This is a good start after 45 years of nothing except ADUs, which are not guaranteed affordable, available, or deeded. He urges your council to strongly support a second yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Next, we have Diane, followed by Sean Higdon and Natalia. Natalia. Diane, you have the floor.
Diane, you keep unmuting and then muting. I can see it. So can you unmute and then speak?
Diane, last call before moving on. Okay, we'll come back. Next, we'll have Sean Higdon.
Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, I can compete against the Zoom voice of silence. But so I am Sean Higdon. I actually spoke before the council a couple of weeks ago about the preschool closure issue that Ms. Donwin raised at the start of our call, of our meeting. And it was exciting to hear that preschool is going to try to reopen. I've been trying to take, Councilmember Francina gave me some good advice to try to speak with the school district. So I've been trying to do the same and trying to look for.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Sean. This is, we're on Agenda Item 4. It's a development agreement.
I'm getting there. I'm getting there. So on, when speaking with the district, the issue that they've cited over and over again in trying to expand programming and increase programming is staffing. And the reason that we do not have the staffing we need to support the programs we want to do is because they can't afford to live here, because there's no affordable housing here. So yes, I agree, Mayor. I was speaking about an issue that wasn't on the agenda, but housing affects every single challenge that this community faces. It's like a virus that's eating away at us and dividing our community, and I hope we can all see that now. And second, especially given the last-minute negotiations that we've had going on here today, is I hope we're all seeing how much our community is suffering by the lack of a plan. We do not, I, I am not certain if the development agreement is the right plan. Obviously, there's still changes going on right now. But what are we going to do in the alternative if that is not the option? If we are not going to do that, what is our Plan B? We, inaction has cost our renters so much in our community. It's cost us all because people in the middle class, people of lower, less financial means, have not been able to live in our community. So I hope this compels us, and I hope this back and forth, even at the last minute, compels us, we need a plan. How are we going to get the 53 units listed in our housing element built, which includes 32 affordable housing units? What are we going to do if we don't do this? So yes, I apologize for raising an item that maybe wasn't on the agenda originally, but it's all linked to this. It's all affected by this housing, and our failure to address us, address it can really cost our community. So I hope we do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean.
Next, we have Natalia, followed by Bill Miley and Paul Magoulis. Natalia, you have the floor.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Hopefully, a image of my living room is popping up. I'm a resident at cottages among the flowers. I do live in a two-bedroom unit and have been so happy to live here with my son, who is a child with special needs. He's autistic. And I, I provide these details only to say that it is so easy to forget about the human lives and stories involved in this and all of the legal jargon, which I understand is, is important and really appreciate the city council's and staff's and mayor's time that you have spent on this. I do ask that as we're, we seem to be nearing a decision, the relocation questions that Ryan Blatts asked on behalf of the residents, I believe, are really important details that there is a lot of gray area and uncertainty with. And I hope that some of those questions will be resolved and get some clarity around that. As we know, with the housing crisis, locally, 60 days really is not enough to find a place, as I'm sure Suzie Francina will tell you, since she's been looking for far longer than that. You know, even, even two years would be great to be figuring out where we're going to go next, since in our case, we need a two-bedroom unit and not a studio, which I believe is what the units will be on South Montgomery. The historic features and changes that Maddie Gadsby asked about, I have the same questions about what specifically will be changed and what seems to be promised to be retained. It would be good to get those details about what will be restored and what will be thrown away. I also agree with Maddie Gadsby about the through roads and the lighting. Preserving the dark night sky, I believe, is important to the human residents of Ojai and also the animal and wildlife. We are right up against the Ventura Preserve and the Los Padres, and so we do have a wildlife corridor. Also, you know, there was a question from the previous speaker, what are we going to do if not this plan? It's not too late to go back to the drawing board and figure out a better plan that works for everyone. It really isn't. Harder things have been done, and it's possible. So please don't be backed into a corner thinking you have to approve this version. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalia.
Next, we have Bill Miley, followed by Paul Magoulis, and no other raised hands. Bill, you have the floor.
I do. I'm speaking because I thought I might be dead. And I asked my daughter to do this, and I guess that was her time. Okay. I'm coming to you from the community hospital, room 522. Successful, I just woke up. A comment was just made about being under a gun. Okay, a comment was, damn it, a comment was just made about being under a gun, implying the developers were threatening to sue. Let's be fair, in Ms. Sabrina Venkis's email, which was sent on 10/18, she said a lawsuit was possible. Hey, man, that's a suit threat. Let's be fair here. Four points. One, the 2019 income study done of tenants showed the results are mostly moderate. Comments from other folks are important, but are strictly opinions unless backed by facts and public data. Two, look at state law, folks, AB 1482. It speaks to a no-fault rental removal, which this is. It says, "One month of returned rental payment must be returned to the renter by state law." Nothing more. What we have here is a lot more. This relocation plan addresses the caring ideas of the council members which you are expressing. We really can't solve California's crazy tight housing market here all by yourself, all by this council. Three, please ask the city attorney if this desire by several council members for expanded relocation benefits is supported by California law, which would protect the city's liabilities. Also, the city attorney asked if this project is voted down, what are the implications for the tenants who live there now? And last, I want this city to be, I want the council to be fair to the city, this project to be fair to the city, the developer, and the tenants. Council, please assess the fairness of this development agreement and the legal basis that it will stand on for the city's protection. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Get well soon. We're all sending you lots of positive energy.
Next, we have Paul Magoulis. Paul, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I discovered today that we were listed as moderate income on the list. So that list doesn't, doesn't apparently reflect what is truly happening. So I urge the council to consider and ask the question, what is going to happen with the two dozen households who will not be able to afford living here after everything happens? Is there an answer to this question? I remember asking it last time, and there was no answer.
Thank you, Paul.
I'm still waiting an answer.
Oh. Can you finish your comment and then?
This is my question, yes. Yes, is there an answer to my question? It's the second time I've raised it.
This is public comment. It's not, it's not a question and answer session.
I see. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Paul.
Mayor, if we could, I know Diane, that was Diane Vlaslof earlier, who many of us know, so I do want to see if we can try her one more time. Weston, is Diane still?
Diane is no longer present.
Okay.
And that's the end of raised hands.
All right, thank you very much, Weston. All right, we will move on to brief rebuttal comments by the developers' rep.
Good evening, council, through the mayor. Lot of good comments and questions. Just going to focus on something that a couple of folks raised, and that's the crisis that you all are facing. Some of you even talked about it earlier today in your questions to staff and, and me. There is a crisis here. It's not of my client's making. It's a 40-year crisis that's been happening to this community. Why? It's easier to say no. It's easier to say no every single time, over and over and over. It's easier to say no. Lots of reasons, lots of people scared of change, and not wanting to change community, and that results in no's. And it's, it's not just you all, it's many communities across California are suffering with this. And it changes the character, it changes the fabric of a community over time. And you all are fighting for that today, to retain that community. And I love that. I've been, I'm really admiring getting to know your community and the people who come out and comment. You know, my, my clients bought this project, Mallory, in 99, as I, as I mentioned, and they, there was an EIR. They received approval in 2012. You know, that's 13 years. That's a long time to go through a process. And then they bought cottages in 2014 with the legal opinion that it was fully entitled. They'd had a recorded map at that time, and the legal, it had extended approvals. The legal opinion was from this, the director, not, not our current director, but the director at that time, that it was a fully entitled project. They've been working to try to build out those units since. This is part of the crisis. Back to the drawing board, we'll never get you the 40% affordable housing project, certainly not on the timeline, that you all need it. You all need it because you have a demand that you need to be able to demonstrate performance against, to the state. And there's major ramifications if you don't. You will lose local control. People will be able to propose housing projects where, no matter what the zoning is, if you are out of compliance, and as you know. So this is actually, you could see it as a great opportunity to maintain your local control, to get more than what you, I believe, are deserving under your existing ordinance, because you do have a lot of affordable here, 40%. So I'll end with the wise words of Bill Miley through his daughter. Please approve a second yes.
Thank you, Beth. All right, we will move on to council discussion.
Ask a question. I, I thought I'll lead off with a question of, that's actually hanging out there, and that was the response to the questions that Councilperson Blatts raised. I thought maybe we should at least know what we're deliberating on specifically. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that the, and this is in the form of a question, but I think it's relevant to our deliberations, that the agreement of 60 to 60 days to 180 days has been agreed to?
Not yet. At that last, we spoke just before the break, there was under consideration. I'll ask Ms. Collins if.
Basically, I'm asking, can we stipulate exactly what we are deliberating on?
Yeah, I think we're looking at two pieces of this puzzle. And one would be, is there agreement from the developer and the city that the tenant protection provision would be available to any current tenant that's current as of tonight, if approved, upon receipt of a six-month notice to relocate? So folks would have six months rather than 60 days to decide, you know, go through the affordability process, or if that doesn't come out, to then do, go down that chain of options. So I'll ask, is that, is that agreed?
Yes, it's agreed. And with the clarification, actually, and we went back and looked, it is built into Mallory, but I, we did not find it, oh, it's built into cottages, but not Mallory.
Right.
So therefore, it will apply to all tenants, a six-month notice. So we do agree to that.
And I'll confirm, I had the same upon review of the packet. It's condition number 22 in the cottages approval, and that's on page 4-132. So it would extend it to the all, all four sites as proposed. So thank you. That, that's helpful. So that's agreed upon, and that would be an added cent- And that would be an added sentence in the residential relocation and assistance plan that would read substantially similar to, "These tenant protection provisions shall be available to any current tenant upon receipt of a six-month notice to relocate, and that current tenant is defined as, capital T, current tenant at the date of approval." The second question is whether the option, the present third-line requirement for 12 months of cash rent payment would be, as proposed in the current draft, only if no other unit is available? Or would it be at the tenant's discretion? And if I could throw out, to be so bold, a potential alternative would be, if the developer won't accept, as I suspect not per our prior discussions, tenant's discretion for 12 months of rent, that it be, alternatively, any current tenant at their discretion may opt to receive a payment equal to six months of their current rent at cottages and Mallory? In other words, right now, it would be, if they don't take the unit that they qualify for, then they could, they could get six months of cash rent. If they take the unit they qualify for, they would take the unit they qualify for. And if there's no unit that's available that meet, that would be substantially similar, then they would get the 12 months. And I would ask again if the developer could commit to that, too. And if there's questions from council. This is all to propose.
What I was asking was what the developer has agreed to for us to deliberate on. What are we deliberating on?
Council could accept or reject, or seek to further modify. But we wanted to understand, what will the developer agree to? So, the council can then decide whether that is suitable or not.
So, you want him to answer your question?
Correct.
And then I can make my...
Right.
Yes, yes. Step one, step two, if, through the chair.
So, we agree to the six-months notice. And the clarification of substantially similar, and that definition, substantially similar means a similar market rate unit, similar in size, and same bathroom or bedroom count. And let's just be really clear, that this is exactly what the tenant relocation plan says right now. If a housing expert determines that a current tenant, as of today, qualifies for affordable housing, that tenant shall be first in line to relocate into a substantially similar, that's that defined term I just said, similar size, same bedroom and bathroom count, substantially similar affordable unit in the project, which is deed restricted to the level of affordability for which the tenant qualifies, moderate, low, very low. Or, a larger unit, if chosen by the current tenant, and the current tenant can qualify to afford the higher rent for the larger unit. So, the current tenant can upgrade. If there is no substantially similar units, again, defined, available that match the current tenant's level of affordability, the developer shall provide one, these are options. One, another unit in the project, and will offer that unit at the rental rate of the tenant's verified level of affordability for one year. Or, two, if no other unit, and it should say, I think, Matthew, substantially similar, right?
Yes, that would be substantially similar, defined as similar size and same bedroom and bathroom count.
Oh, no, actually, no, here. So, it's only if there's a substantially similar unit, then they get it at that rent. But if there's no other, I guess you're right, or I was right, substantially similar unit is available to the project, developer will provide the current tenant with a payment of equal to 12 months' rent of the current tenant's current rent at Mallory or cottages. So, what I think I hear you saying is, first, Councilmember Blatz asked, can we opt into that second option first, instead of going into a substantially similar unit? And the answer's no for that. It's just too much. After, it's been a long line, long road, and the answer's no on that. The second request was, could it be six months? I think is what I just heard, and I have not spoken with my client about that. Do you want to? No. No. And I understand, I understand...
Define what we're dealing with here.
Yeah. So, that, really, we're looking at, we're willing to add the six months. We're defining substantially similar. Hopefully, this answers Councilmember Blatz's concern that I'm in a two-bedroom, I want to be able to get a two-bedroom. And hopefully, that answers your concern. And I hope this is still enough that you can see the benefits of the agreement and say yes tonight, instead of no.
Thank you, Beth. All right, other council members?
Okay.
Susa?
Yeah. Is it my turn? Okay, so, questions, and I'll give some...
Microphone, please.
And this, I want to clarify, I know you're having fun over there.
Sorry, we're clarifying an issue.
I want to clarify a question that I asked last time. This is for Matt.
Okay.
So, last time, I, you know, I mentioned, I said, in so many words, that things can change dramatically in the next 10 years. And I want to really look at what we're locked into with this development agreement. And I asked, in so many words, if the state has stronger tenant protection laws and rental protection laws, all of that, would that override the development agreement? And I thought you said that it would. But I want to, I'll ask like a theoretical question. If after development agreement is signed, the state passed a state law that required any landowner that demolishes housing units to build the number of housing units demolished, would that law be enforceable against Mr. Becker with the development agreement in place?
So, you're gonna hate this next comment, but it would depend on how exactly that law is worded. That law could be worded to be, for any project approved on or after the date of its adoption, it shall apply. It would not apply then. It could also be worded for any demolition conducted on or after the date of that new law. This shall apply. If it was worded the latter way, it would likely control. I say likely, not certainty, because we don't know precisely how that law will be worded. It might have an exception.
Okay.
So, it's a bit tough to answer definitively about a hypothetical future law that doesn't exist.
Okay, okay.
But to answer the other comment, if the state were to adopt eviction protection requirements that applied in all cases, and that had no exceptions, then that would control over the development agreement. What, generally, the development agreement freezes the city's zoning code and the city laws for the period of time, 10 years. It doesn't freeze the state. The state can still override, but it depends on exactly what the state does, whether it does or does not override.
Okay. That sounds...
But we can't contract against state law.
Yeah, yeah.
With certain exceptions.
Okay, so, before I get to the bigger picture, the, some, I think it was Maddie, or one of the other residents, asked about the design of Mallory Way and not having through streets. There was a number of related questions. Can, are, can those be raised at this point? Or is this going back to the planning commission? Because it's not for six years, probably, right?
So, for Mallory and cottages, it will not go back to the planning commission?
Okay.
So, if there's, if you have that question, we should work through it now.
Okay. Well, I spent considerable time there, Sunday night, with the residents. And then, I came back Monday morning, walked around with the guidance of Maddie. And I looked at the plan, because right now, the summer is a dead-end street, and West Eucalyptus is dead-end. And I, my thinking is that if you, first, I need to, I want to know why wasn't Mark, was, were the entrance, wasn't required that the traffic go through? Was this a design that Mark Whitman did? Because if you encouraged the through traffic, first of all, you're gonna have more cement that will impact the roots of the tree. You'll have, you know, the whole, it changes the whole character of that housing development by having two-through streets, if I understand the math correctly. Like, whose idea was that?
So, I don't know the answer to that question, because I wasn't here when the project was designed in 2007. But what I'm gonna recommend through the mayor is if we ask the applicant's planner to answer that question, because it was their project.
Okay, that'd be great.
They should know the details.
Thank you.
Or the applicant's team.
Yeah. Councilmember Francina, through the mayor. So, Mallory was approved in 2012, right? Reopening that approval at this point, I would say, is hazardous for a variety of reasons. We don't know the comments that FIRE made, for example. It's very likely that FIRE asked for roads of certain widths to be able to access and make it safer. Right now, FIRE can't get as easily into the site. So, I, not having been here, through living the day-to-day when I entitle a project, I understand exactly where every single comment and question and things in the site plan came from. I can't tell you that right now, because I did not memorize the entire record of Mallory Way projects. So, I would recommend against tweaking it, because it could have ramifications into the environmental review, the safety. Fire department could be on the line now, saying, no, we need that pass-through.
Okay. But, my question is, related, the development agreement doesn't necessarily, unless there was a fire department or some legal requirement for that access, because all these years, there hasn't been access. Same with the lighting plan, all those things. If the developer wanted to change it voluntarily, he's not locked into that.
Well, it would be approved as proposed, because that's what was analyzed under CEQA.
Okay.
And/or has been deemed exempt. So, if the developer wanted to change the routing, the site routing, for example, they could apply to the city to modify the approval.
Okay.
To reflect that change. And depending on the scope of that request, it would be approved by the staff as a minor adjustment. Something like site plan is not minor. That would come back to the planning commissioner or council as a major adjustment.
Okay.
So, the development agreement doesn't prohibit that change.
That's really my question.
The developer can't make a change without city approval.
Yes, okay, that's good. Okay, so, back, I'll give a little background, okay? As many people know, I have been looking for housing almost a year. And my situation is a little more complex, because it's, I have to, I can only live on the south side of Ojai Avenue. But I'm intimately acquainted, I go to Zillow and Craigslist and Ojai Housing Sites, you know, on a regular basis. So, I know how difficult it is to find housing. And I'm lucky, because I have what I would call emergency housing. And, you know, the last time I was here, last Tuesday, I was very conflicted between voting yes or no. But I basically spent the entire week getting clarity on the ramifications of both, the pros and cons of both. So, my vote tonight is a much more educated vote. I walked the South Montgomery site with Mr. Becker and his arborist, Bill Mallett, I hope I'm saying that right, and Gail Motiva, who's like a representative of the 50 residents that signed that petition. And we were very happy with everything we learned. The oak trees are on the perimeter, and we saw the site plan, the parking plan. I would still hope that, as things move along, that that can end up to be a one-car or car-less development. But that's, you know, down the road. Those are things I learned tonight, that the developer is not locked in. And he's very open to discussion, and perhaps that's something that he would, you know, discuss with me. While we're on South Montgomery, back in, when I, my first term on the council, this is my third term, I was the sole no vote when they wanted to demolish the Evergreen cottages, which was real low-income housing that had definitely been strategically neglected. And at that time, there was no state, no laws at all to, for replacement housing. And so, we have the condominiums. There was one planning commissioner who also, I think, voted no. He'd been on the planning commission like 30 years. He said, "Development like this is like a wrecking ball through Ojai." That was his words. And I also was the sole no vote, number of other times, when low-income housing was demolished, sole no vote. So, if you vote no, be proud of your vote. You know, I don't know yet how I'm gonna vote. But if I don't vote no, I, you know, and I don't know how you're gonna vote, but it's, we gotta own our vote. When it comes down to it, we're the only ones that can, you know, we're sitting up here, we're elected. And I have great respect for the information I gathered from both sides of the issue. But as I walked the South Montgomery land, I began to get a clearer picture in my mind. It was like an epiphany of what was the developer's responsibility and what is the city's responsibility. And I agree with the resident L. The comments that she made, I thought, were very astute, and I feel alignment with her comments, that the city, we can't put this all on Mr. Becker's shoulders, that we don't have low-income housing. I think, I wrote this down, I feel it's the city's responsibility to partner with agencies that build housing. And in the meantime, because the crisis is so bad, I hope that the next council comes together to provide emergency housing. We need it now. There are at least seven homeless people sleeping in the back here, including a 73-year-old woman, who's getting crazier by the day, because she's sleeping in 40-degree weather. And I'm 73, and I can just imagine what it's like to sleep out in the open. I realize people have tried to help her, but if we had that, there's nothing like privacy. You know, I am lucky, because I have a little cabin, I've got my two dogs waiting for me, and it's not even illegal, but it's, I'm not doing anything illegal there. It's like, I'm a guest of a friend. I pay no rent, I, you know, I help with utilities. But I'm lucky that a friend offered me temporary housing. I never dreamed I'd be there a year. All my things are in storage, which is, but, so, I want to provide not only emergency housing, loosen restrictions on, you know, perhaps, I don't want to use the word backyard trailers, but already, people are living illegally in their cars and in trailers that you can't see from the street. That's a fact. Not in the city, but surrounding areas. Because most people want privacy, rather than a, many, most, I would say, especially older people, we like our privacy, rather than a home share. I also want to point to the fact that what is happening at the cottages and what's going to happen in the future at the cottages with the issue of displacement is happening every single day in Ojai. There are plenty of, you know, a number, I don't know the numbers, but there is, there are enough longtime residents who are selling their houses at high, you know, it's a, what do you call it, a seller's market? Yeah. And then, the buyer rents, if they don't live there themselves, usually, it's, many times, it's an investment, as what happened to me. An investor bought my house, my rent, that was $1,006.50, for an uninsulated house that was like an icebox in the winter and an oven in the summer, to the point where I could, you know, I couldn't stay in the house in the middle of the day. It was that hot, it was like a pizza oven. But that was the price of affordable housing, a $200 electric bill, you know, at that. But, so, my point is that the problem is much, much deeper than the fact, you know, than the problems that are with this project. We would, I would definitely like to see more low-income units. And then, I have a question. I did send you a letter to... I did send you a letter today, did you get that letter? Okay, and so I haven't mentioned this to anyone, my backup, oh, I want to finish my other train of thought. I know for a fact that apartments toward Summer Street back in there have been bought up by billion, million-dollar developers. The tenants don't even know the owner's name. The other day, I got a call, her neighbor died, the rent immediately went up $1,000. Or whatever, it went from, it's $2,999. I don't know why, you know, but up from, the average used to be $1,500. So rents are doubling all over town. So this is a problem that is so much bigger than what we have before. The problem, the problems that we have with this project are, you know, we all have a responsibility for the problems, the housing problems. Okay, where was I? Oh, I was going to read this, yeah. Okay. Here's the number-one problem that I've identified with the development agreement. And I know some people will argue that there's many, many problems. But here's my main problem and the problem that people have pointed out to me a number of times. The number one, the one number cited in the development agreement that I hear over and over again by those who oppose the DA, and the one that also stands out for me is the number of units for very low-income residents. Just one out of the 67. Six low-income, one very low-income units built, which is seven out of 67 units. Putting everything else, this is in the letter that I wrote them, okay? Putting everything else aside for the moment, I can understand why many members of the public say that is not enough. I believe it would go a long way toward community acceptance if that number was increased. I'm hoping that at this late hour, you would consider that possibility. But if not, I have a second proposal. Just thinking outside the box, and I haven't run this by James or Matt or anyone. I propose an action which will be more equitable and I don't think will be divisive. I propose that the city of Ojai subsidize four units of the 67 contained in the project for very low-income residents. This would likely be less expensive than a lawsuit and with positive benefits, including greater community acceptance. So, open for discussion, further discussion. Is that even possible if it was accepted?
It's possible. The developer would have to agree to it, the council majority would have to agree to it. They'd have to understand what that would, before I could recommend council agree to it, we'd need to understand what does that cost?
Uh-huh.
Because as proposed right now, the city doesn't pay any subsidy cost. That would, of course, be having the city pay costs. So it's possible, but we need to get council majority approval. The other question is, would the developer agree to that? They might raise a concern regarding prevailing wages. Right now, their project doesn't have to pay prevailing wages. If city money is added into the project, then prevailing wages may be triggered and they may not want to pay that.
Uh-huh.
So that's a question I would have. And in addition to the question, of course, is there council support to pay cash-in?
Okay.
And if so, how much? And James may have further comments.
If I could just add too, because I'd also remind everybody, there isn't going to be one project that's a solution to all of our affordable housing problems. And so one of the things that the city council's already done is, for example, is looking to partner with Habitat for Humanity on the project on North Montgomery. So I do want to remind everybody that we are going to have to contribute some funding, the city's going to have to contribute some funding to that North Montgomery Habitat for Humanity project. So I would remind everybody of that because I think that that could be part of the solution too. Where the city will have more control over those. As our project and will be able to kind of weigh in on what categories a little bit more. So it may be a case where adding our project, adding this development agreement and some of the other projects that are kind of down the pipeline gets us to where we need to be. But I don't think it's going to be solved by one project. I think that's clear, so.
May I make a follow-up comment to that? So my thinking is this, if, I'm hoping, and perhaps it can be confirmed by Beth, that the current tenants have at least two years' security, it seems like, before they would even have to move. I see someone nodding their head. And at that point, if we don't have low-income housing built, I don't want to see any of those tenants have to leave Ojai because they can't find a place to live. I would hope that the next council will approve some kind of emergency plan until there's more low-income housing built. You know, and by emergency housing, it totally exists. You know, there's these ready-made units that we could put on our own land. All of that could be done while we're building other units. That's correct, right?
Yes.
If the council approved it.
Yeah, and so those are, those are things, you know, one thing, we're coming up on another new year somehow. And I think usually in January and February, we have our city council priority setting session. And I get the sense that one of the priorities is going to be affordable housing so we can identify what projects we want to look at in the meantime as well.
Yeah.
And so.
And then may I respond to one of the speakers who wanted to, you know, because there's so many things that could still be tweaked, including the tenant protection. She recommended continuing it, that was Grace, that is my wife, to the next council. And I have a problem with that. This is not perfect, but it's been through so many council members and we've worked so hard. The thought of pushing it forward, I'm not in favor of that. It's just unfortunate, so many things are converging. But that's just a fact. This is our last meeting, I believe, with the current council, with the two that aren't running. And perhaps we'll see you because you have history, which is a good thing. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Suzha. Randy?
Well, the, you know, I'm not going to respond to that, I don't have to. The, you know, it seems like, it seems like what we've done is, when it comes to affordable housing is, when we've neglected to maintain the existing housing stock that we have, then we've created an environment of affordability because you just can't charge someone what you would normally charge someone to rent a house because it's rundown. You know, and it kind of took me back too when I, I've had two employees work for me for 27 and 26 years. And the bone of Fazio passed away this year. But I remember I picked them up at their house one day, in fact, right around the corner from here. And they were living in a garage on a mattress. That was affordable housing. That's probably affordable housing today. And I was, as we're sitting here having this discussion, I said to myself, what's, you know, what's changed in 28 years? And I think what's changed tonight is the fact that we might be willing to move something forward. Whereas in 2016, we got caught up in the argument again of no, that we can't. And so, you know, I'm not going to drag this on. I'm going to stay exactly where I was last week. I believe that there's no perfect deal out there, but I think this is a good deal. We went into these negotiations and we instructed our ad hoc committee to do better than 10%. In fact, when they came, in one closed session, they came back and they were talking about where they were in the moment. And I think all of us were up in arms over the fact that we said 10% wasn't good enough. And they went back and negotiated harder. So I think we have something that's good, it's not perfect. And I think it's a starting point for something that the next council and the council after that can recognize that we need to do something in this community, other than sitting on our hands and saying no. That we've got to get moving, we've got to start thinking about what we can do instead of thinking about what we can't do. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you, Randy. Bill?
I'm going to mention a piece of history that has always bothered me. Just before I started my first term, I want to remind everyone, there was a proposal that, you know, one of our largest private employers, the Ojai Valley Inn, wanted to do to build housing for their employees, that they could walk to work, literally. And at the time, none of us were on the council at that time. But I remember it very clearly. Because the council decided that it would cause too much traffic to build housing for people that wouldn't have to drive to work. And frankly, that was one of my motivations to run for office because I thought that was terribly short-sighted, to say the least. And when I, you know, arguably am the one that started all this by saying, "We can do better than," by objecting to the planning commission's approval way back when. I think we've gotten to a place that's frankly better than any of us at the time thought we could be, that we could get to. We got it even, some things better tonight in terms of additional stipulations of tenant protection. But everything I've heard that objects is either a matter of say no because our city attorney is wrong, which means we have attorneys disagreeing, which means we're going to drive resources into litigation instead of housing, as opposed to the development agreement clearly puts resources into housing. Are we, don't, we don't protect the current tenants because we think, while they're not protected, when we say no, that we could construct something better? I don't like that position at all. I think this protects more than without it. And it does not preclude building on this. For example, councilperson Francina and I went before the planning commission advocating for the overlay zone for the American Legion property, which I think is going to be a perfect public-private partnership opportunity for significant affordable housing for this next council to address that might get these numbers up the way we want them. But here and now, we've got this choice. And I think we need to keep clear about this choice that there is more protection for these, for the current residents with this than without it. We've made some additional enhancements tonight, which are great. But I really am uncomfortable if we say no and don't provide that protection way over and above state law with the hope that somehow there'll be something better in the future, forever how long that would take, without that protection for the existing tenants. So I don't know, that's why I think we should proceed.
Thank you, Bill. Ryan?
Thanks. First of all, on Mallory Way, is it possible to have it, have at least signage that says that through traffic is only for residents?
Good, good point. And guests?
Off the top of my head, I think that, yeah, that'd be fine, with some sort of an emergency exception.
Yeah, obviously there's.
The larger concern may well have been fire access, so as long as that was, you know.
I'm pretty sure, I was aware of this project back then a little bit. And I think it was FIRE was one of the reasons that they did that. But it's not, it's not a convenient thoroughfare in really any way. But I know that there's tenants who are concerned about it, it was a concern, I know, back in 2012. But if it was possible to just have signage that said residential traffic only, I think that would at least be something that would be hopefully, you know, in the alternative of not.
Yeah, I think the city could be able to change it.
I think there are also barriers that fire department can easily breach that also supply that type of.
Well, you can't have a fence that has a fire lock to it.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I mean, if it came up that the city could, I mean, we can't really redo that part tonight, I don't think.
Yeah, we could certainly do the signs tonight. I think we'd have to check with FIRE about doing the bollards that are fire access only.
Hi, just one comment on that. The design is also not convenient.
Right.
It goes like this and then they go around and it's meant really for residents only. But however, blocking cars and requiring some sort of a clicker could have spillover impacts that were not considered with the original.
That's not what we were talking about.
Okay, so I, but FIRE, sure, and I agree with the sign, we're fine with signs saying residents only.
Thank you. That's as creative as I can get for that. Then Matt, in Ms. Venskus's letter, she talks about a track map being expired after two years. She says it twice. Now, is there, she cites an Ojai municipal code as well as a section of, it looks like the California, oh, I don't know, California melted safety code in context of vesting track maps, is there?
So the citations for vesting track maps, once approved at the tentative track map stage, typically have two years, sometimes three, usually extended by state law, more time to become final track maps. Once the track map is approved as a final track map, that's a final action. And for those who aren't familiar with it, to take it back to the bigger picture, track maps at the level of the size we're talking about, there's a tentative track map and a final track map. The tentative track map is approved upfront and that says you can subdivide the land if a bunch of conditions have been met. Once those conditions are met, then you can approve the final track map, which actually affects the subdivision of the land. Once subdivided, that does not expire. In this case, the track map for cottages to condo it was approved in 2010. That did not expire, does not and cannot expire.
Another point of clarification, however, there is a track map in Mallory and that one is still pending and under the code, there is a pending extension. So that one is not yet final.
So again, the track maps have, they have not expired though, that's, but.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the cottage track map, the condos are done, Mallory track map, Beth is correct. The Mallory track map, the city's position there is that it has expired but can be extended given the proposed approval.
Thank you, Matt. Then one thing, you know, I heard tonight, again, this is what makes this way tough as we hear, there's not enough low-income units or there's not enough super-low income or, you know, different affordability levels. But then there's always comments about, but you're paving over all of Ojai. We can't have it both ways, we can't have more units and less construction. So we're going to have to balance that moving forward. And that's what this does with the backdrop of a previously approved plan. But it's going to be the debate that this council has to face for a long time. How much of Ojai do we want to cover with stuff? How much should be housing? How much should that housing be? But in the future, it's not going to have this backdrop of some plan that somebody else approved a long time ago that maybe we're not stuck with, Ms. Venskus, but we are dealing with as a potential litigation problem. So I hope that that'll make this a lot clearer in the future. That being said, I am disappointed that we can't work something out on the 12 months. But I do understand and I am well-aware of the substantially similar requirements inside the code. I'm just very concerned that it's going to limit people to have one year and they'll be in a substantially similar unit. So to give them some opportunity and some time to figure it out, so I do greatly appreciate that. I just also know it's, they're going to have that clock ticking where the rent's going to go up a whole bunch, probably. Maybe it won't work out quite like that. But then, if we can't get there, then my next question is, and it was brought up, and this has not been dealt with, but is there a limitation or any other idea that the owners have about rent increases in the pending period between, if this is approved, and whenever somebody receives their six-month notice? Is that just going to be your standard, whatever the law allows? Or is it going to be something different? I mean, are you guys going to start jacking up the rents? And, I mean, I don't want to see it happen, I trust you wouldn't do that, but I want, I don't trust anybody not doing anything in my world, so.
Councilmember Blatts through the mayor. I mean, the best thing really to see what these, this family, these families, the best evidence is what they've been doing since 1999 when they've owned the Mallory. the best evidence is what they've been doing since 1999, when they've owned the Mallory project. And, you know, they bought 2014, the cottages. They're not doing that, they don't plan to do that, they kept the rents low because-
I'm going to stop you there, all right?
Yeah.
I appreciate that. But in September of this year, after our July meeting, how many tenants had their rent raised at the two properties? I understand it hadn't been a long time, but- I mean, I'm just saying, it happened right after our meeting in July, is my understanding. So I'm trying to make sure that's not going to happen after our meeting in October.
My understanding is there's not an intent to raise the rents, and they will certainly, of course, comply with all laws, but there's not an intent to jack up the rents.
I mean, is there an agreement on a time to freeze it, or is it just going to be, hey? Because, look, we didn't talk about this in July, and people had their rent raised, and it ended up being a serious problem. I mean, I don't expect them to do it, but I, again, unless it's in writing, it's not a term that we can enforce. So my question is, is the developer going to do something, or is there any type of freeze? Or, we do not want to walk out of here and see rents increased and have things changed so that when the moment comes of their six-month situation, or anything else that could impact them, or continue to raise them to the maximum level, and then if they decide they can't afford it anymore, then you have no responsibilities to provide any relocation plan.
Right. Councilmember Blatts through the mayor. I mean, these gentlemen and their families live in this town, they don't have an intent to start, you know, working to evict people, especially after all this time. They've been very accommodating, adding another, a change to this agreement at this time. I mean, I asked, I started, the first day, I think I was here, just, what, it was 40 days ago, maybe? I asked for 30 more days. And I think a number of you said, "You'd better use it." You know, "Come to the table and actually show up, and we want to see affordable housing." And there was all that discussion, and all that happened, and we had multiple meetings. And now we are here, and you're asking for more again.
No, I'm not asking for more.
I would say, please take the yes.
I'm asking for confirmation about something that transpired before. Now, and as you're well aware, this process is in flux, and we've given you ample opportunity to come in and provide more. And frankly, it wasn't, you guys didn't come back with that much more. And I'm not knocking it, I appreciate it, but it wasn't a substantial change of things. Now, what I'm really worried about is the fact that, all right, if we can't do 12 months, which I thought would protect some people, is there any, I mean, should these renters expect a rent increase? Or is it going to be that the six-month notice window, or the notice, you know, the six-month notice would start when relocation rights were available? Are you wanting to say that if the rent is increased, then their relocation rights would then vest, if you will? So if the rent, if it's not within, if they're not saying, they're not getting an eviction notice saying, "All right, within six months, we're going to evict you," or, I should say, "Six months or more, we're going to evict you." Then if they get a notice of rent increase, if they decide they want to move out, would they be provided relocation assistance?
If they decide they're going to move out, then they-
This is only after a rent increase has been, you know, they've been noticed of a rent increase.
I understand.
Okay.
The trouble is, we've been through the process of the city for a very, very, very long time. And so promising there will be no rent increases, when we could be looking at years and years and years. Someone was saying two years until the-
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that there's no rent increases. What I'm saying is that if someone were to receive a rent increase, because if they, if they were, like tomorrow, or a month from now, or six months from now, or a year from now, whatever it may be, they're not given a six-month notice that they are within their relocation right time, right? Because if it's before that, and somebody wants to move out voluntarily, they don't get any relocation benefits, correct?
The relocation benefits are triggered upon the six months, now it's six months.
Correct. Would you be willing to make them triggered upon any future rent increase at the property?
No. I'd say, "I really appreciate you all, and you are dogged."
That's a significant problem.
Negotiators, I will tell you that these gentlemen are not planning on instituting a bunch of rent increases, or creating problems with their tenants. And I really appreciate your interest in protecting them. I will tell you, this is an excellent deal, this is the deal. Thank you.
Mayor, can I have one comment on that?
Oh, yeah, I'm going to make a comment, but can you-
Just related to, related to what Councilman Blatts was talking to. You know, I asked last week what your company had done to contribute to this community. And I think the ask tonight is, is that you do exactly what Councilman Blatts asked, in that we figure out how not to raise the rents on these units. And we can argue how long we want to do that for, but you know what? This is not about us trying to squeeze you, or you trying to, you know, save yourself from some catastrophic events that you won't make enough money on this project. This is about what you're willing to do for this community. And I think it'd be real easy to stand up at that podium right now and say what you're willing to do. That's how I feel about that. And I'm reaching a point now where I'm getting, where now I'm getting pissed about this. Because we're not squeezing you, and I appreciate you defending your client, but we are not squeezing you. We are looking out for our community. And if we're asking that you just stand up and say, "We will not raise the rent on these units for one year," then say that. And if you can't, then stand up and say, "We're not willing to do that either."
He's two years.
Councilmember Haney?
Yeah.
Through the mayor. So, my clients will agree not to raise the rent for a year, yes. With that, I encourage you to take, I understand why you want more, but I encourage you to take the bird in the hand, vote the second yes, and, you know, partner with this developer to do another deal, you know? Do other affordable housing projects, you know, that everything can't be done on this project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Can I ask a question?
I'm going to speak. First, would like to thank staff, and the developers, and your lawyers, and the ad hoc committee for working so hard for so long on this. I realize how complicated it is, and really appreciate your efforts. And I think it's really important, as Suzie said, to own our votes. And I'm going to own my vote. I do not support approval of this development agreement, and here's why. There are four reasons. First, I do not agree that we should be treating these applicants in a special way by giving them a 10-year enforceable contract for four developments at once. Each development proposal should be considered and negotiated on its own merit near the time the developer wants to begin work. Second, the environmental reviews for the cottages and Mallory Way projects were performed back in 2007 and 2012. And environmental circumstances have changed substantially since that time. These developments should not be approved absent current environmental reviews. That include, but are not limited to, study of extended drought, climate-driven aridification, and related water supply issues. Third, the city of Ojai should comply with its own affordable housing ordinance. If approved as presently proposed, this development agreement allows the applicant to move forward outside these rules. The city has afforded considerable discretion under the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Why would we preclude the incoming and future city councils from deciding what is in the best interests of the city as a whole? That's what we are doing if we approve this development agreement. And fourth, the city council has the power, under the Affordable Housing Ordinance, to require a robust tenant protection plan. If this development agreement is approved, we will be precluded from improving tenant protections for the next 10 years. And for those four reasons, those are the four reasons why I do not support approval of this development agreement. So I would like to make a motion to deny the agreement.
I always say yes.
You will second that?
Yes, doesn't mean I'm voting for it.
Okay, all right.
In case we want to discuss it.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
Yeah, I did, I said second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Are we going to-
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
Councilmember Blatts.
Hold off, Weston, please, thank you.
When do I get to ask my final?
Well, let's have a roll call, please, Weston.
Councilmember Blatts. Mayor Sticks.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
No.
Mayor Protem Haney.
No.
Councilmember Wirick.
No.
All right, we'll move on.
Oh. The residents ask, who enforces, if they have questions? Who do they go to? Do they go to the city, housing authority, the developer?
Yes, they can come to the city for any of the questions about any of the enforcement items. We mentioned last time around, I don't think we got into it this time, that the housing authority will be the ones that verify the income limits. But if there, if there's any belief that this agreement is not being followed, they should come to us. I will note, too, kind of in line with that, we had a couple of questions about, like, things like the dark sky ordinance. And all of those rules are applicable, there's nothing in the agreement that exempts them from following dark skies or other city codes. And so similarly, if there was a complaint that that was not being followed, they would call the city, and we would respond with our code enforcement, just like anywhere else in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Randy?
I just wanted to touch on, going back to Councilman Blatts's comments about parking. Is there any way, Matt, is there any way to do parking by permit in this area?
Inside the project?
Yes.
I think that would effectively be required, because it's all private land.
Cottage and Mallory, I thought Mallory was the one that had the condo association, the LLC attached to it. They both do.
Yeah, I think they're both going to have a condo association, but I'll look to the developer to confirm that, as the implementer of the project on the ground.
I believe there's common area, and yes, there'll be a condo association. I don't believe it's public, a public road.
Yeah, I don't think so.
So, yeah, this parking will be, won't be just open to the public.
Right, well, I was just trying to secure the roads for fire or for tenants versus, you know, because what's going to happen, as we look at more influx of tourism in this community, we're going to be looking at more people parking in front of people's houses. And then people are going to want us to put in place an ordinance that says, "Permit parking only," blah, 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 so I was trying to get ahead of the curve. But it sounds like if it's private, it's private.
Yeah, I was just saying, it's already private land.
They can already do that.
So it'll already be signed, residents only, and of course, fire always has access.
Yeah, the resident-only signage, I think, will help address that concern.
And then, and then my final comment.
Residential traffic only.
Right, yeah. My final comment was, again, I didn't really want to go here tonight, and I thought last week I was giving you an opportunity to speak. And then I heard it again tonight, Mayor, it's just, I'm sorry, and I'm saddened, and most of the time, I'm puzzled that you had an opportunity to talk about what you could do, and instead, you talked about what you won't do. And I'm just sorry, I wished, I wished you and your group could have been more forward-thinking and having a week to think about maybe making some suggestions that might benefit, not necessarily this project, but any project going forward, so. I wasn't going to bring it up, but it just seems like here it is, presented in front of us once again.
I will just repeat that we have the power, the city council has the power, under the Affordable Housing Ordinance, to require a robust tenant protection plan. And so that's the answer. Would, Bill?
Seems to fall on me to offer another motion. I'm going to make a motion and see where it goes, that we approve the recommendations two through six from the, of the ad hoc committee's recommendation, I don't, you know, number one is the public comment matter, but two through six, with the additional stipulations, see if I can get the language right, of changing the 60 days to 180 days notice on the tenant protection plan as, and I'll make the additional statement as described by the city attorney.
Sorry, how many days did you say?
Sort of 60 days to six months, six times 30 is 180 days.
Yeah, I thought you said 120.
No, it's 180. 60 days to 180 days, or two months to six months. The second additional stipulation is to include the substantially similar enhancement language to make clear what we're talking about in terms of comparability. And third, a one-year moratorium on any rent increases from the time of approval.
And if I could be so, per the prior discussion, the fourth would be the residential traffic-only signage?
Yes. And I would add on my, that would be number four. And the number three would be, that's a restriction over and above state law restrictions on rent increases for that one-year period.
Yeah, it'd be, it would be aligned in the development agreement to be a one-year rent freeze.
Yes.
No increase from the date of approval for cottages in Mallory.
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please, Weston.
Yes. Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney.
Yes.
Mayor Sticks.
No.
Councilmember Blatts.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. We have one more item, so let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll be right back. Thank you.
Brian, please.
Thank you, Brian, for waiting. Item number five. Can we have quiet, please? Request. It's way for the crowd, Lee.
Yeah, give it a moment.
No, he's not.
I think Brian's gonna throw him out to get his item going.
I wanna go to bed, get out of here. He's hurting him out.
Okay, item number five. Request from two council members to consider a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission to extend the deadline of the nomination forms to be received from November 8th to December 13th. So, do we have a staff report?
Yeah, I'll start with the very brief staff report, and then I'll see if the, either the two council members wanna add a little bit. The very brief staff report is that on September 13th, the city council had already, or had discussed this matter and had directed staff to send out a one-page letter to the 56 property owners able to vote within the district. In that letter, we were directed to include the deadline as November 8th to vote. Attachment A in the packet shows that notice that we did send out, that notice did say November 8th on it, and I mentioned that just because if we were going to change the deadline, I would, we would recommend having, or sending out another notice with the new deadline. And I will also just note that that went out because I am sure we'll hear some questions or concerns from business owners about the changed deadline. So just to let everybody know that that did go out. And that's all I have, and the item's on at the request of two council members who asked for the council to discuss whether to extend that deadline or not. And so, I would suggest letting.
We hold a public hearing, and, and, you know, we get advice from staff. Then we go through that process. And, and, and then we get caught up in the moment, thinking that we have to make a decision. And I thought that when we made the decision that night on this here regarding the timeline, that I think it was one of those nights that we were in, one of those moments where we felt we were compelled to do something immediately. And, and in hindsight, and after talking with Brian and going to the HPC meeting, I just came to the conclusion that, and I'm glad that Councilman, Councilwoman Francina agreed, is getting it right is more important than rushing it through. So I think that, that giving them the opportunity in 30 more days isn't necessarily an evil extension. But, now, I'm saying that about this, and I'm sure it's gonna be real easy to say then, why didn't you do it about the affordable housing, or why didn't you do it about this or that? The reality is, every discussion item that comes before us is unique. I'm going to suggest, if I win, and I'm seated, to the next council, that we create a new and a different, and I think a better deliberation process, that when we have discussion items that come to us in the future, that we actually hold the public hearing, we actually get the staff report, we actually get the public input, we actually come back to council, close the public hearing, and we actually discuss it. And then what we do in that moment is continue it for two weeks, so that we have time to hear and do more research as to, like Councilwoman Francina just did this past week, spend time walking, talking, and just gathering more information. And I think that then we come back the following two weeks, and we're not opening up a public hearing, we're opening up a continuation, and then we can actually vote without feeling in that moment this, this deep, deep pressure. And in eight years, I have felt that, many a night, many a council evening, that, you know, you know, 30, 40 people have come up here and they're riled, and they're angry, and they want action, and you just feel like, oh crap, I gotta, I gotta succumb to that hostility. And you lose track of the fact that we represent 7,500 people. So that's why I'm asking for this extension, and I don't think 30 days is the, is, is gonna break this opportunity to create this historic district if that community, if our community wants to do so.
Oh, I'm asking for the extension because the Historic Preservation Commission wants it, and I see how hard they work. I was the liaison last quarter, I think it was last quarter, and 30 days seems reasonable. And also because I do know some people who oppose this, and I feel like they haven't, they don't have the right information as far as the effect of it. So I would like, you know, the Historic Commission opportunity to reach out and, you know, do their job, and then see how it turns out. You're gonna, you're gonna speak?
Yeah. Any questions from council?
I was just gonna invite one of our council people that just spoke that are gonna remain, you know, one will remain and one is being up for reelection, one of them make a motion, let's get.
Do you, we have public comment first?
Brian, you don't have to speak, but you can. I can tell you, I think I know what's gonna happen.
I got it down to two minutes and 55 seconds, and then I rewrote it, so. Yeah, this is, this is basically informative, and I'll get it done quick. Good evening, everyone, thank you Susan and Randy for putting this item on the agenda. Thank you to each of you for your service and hard work in serving the City of Ojai Community, and I say that to each of you, knowing that I may not see some of you. I'm Brian Akins, Chair Historic Preservation Commission, I'm here asking for an extension for the November 8th deadline set by council on September 13th, to be extended until December 1st, that was the date I actually mentioned. I know your agenda mistakenly said December 13th, but I did go back and check, and it was December 1st that mentioned, that I mentioned when I appeared before you in public comments in the September 27th meeting. Clarifying this with Lucas last Friday, I believe he felt the December 1st date would allow enough time for staff to prepare a report for the December 13th meeting. We are working very hard to get information out to all parcel owners, including our own 56 millings, which included a stamped envelope addressed to Lucas to assure security of their submittal. Now, I will tell you that many of those stamped envelopes had Christmas stamps on them, because at 11:30 Sunday night, I ran out of regular stamps. And Shell, Shell does not sell stamps. As of yesterday, there were 25 parcel owners who hadn't yet declared, many of which have been contacted, but just not chosen to submit, such as our own city and county. Others, we are reaching out to and providing updated information for their review. One piece of updated information is the endorsement letter from Tony Thatcher, owner of the parcel where Ojai Rotae is. The letter was emailed to you today, as well as emailed to Weston to become a part of the public record, and he confirmed that he received it. As mentioned in our last HPC meeting, October 13th, to our council liaison, Randy Haney, we are working very hard to contact everyone, get them information, answer questions, enabling them to make an educated choice. We found our October 13th meeting to be very informative. I encourage all parcel owners, as well as the Ojai community, to watch it. We are honored to have Barbara Bowman show up. She is the only person who has actually shown up to our meetings since we went live. She came a few months ago. Thank you, Barbara. Starting at 28 minutes, 39 seconds into the meeting, just so you don't have to, Barbara came to the microphone, relayed to us her three questions. The first was about processes, and the other two were about applicability, needs, and potential benefits to those in the local district. Those questions were answered by Lucas and Mara, by Commissioners McHatten, Preborah, and me, Commissioner Convery was out of town. Because the local downtown historic district was the primary topic for the night, and only Barbara and a friend were in attendance, the discussion lasted one hour and 21 minutes, finishing at one hour, 49 minutes, and 52 seconds. Open, honest, respectful questions, answers, and discussion. I talk quicker at home. We wished we had had such a meeting months before, please watch it, so informative that I'm sharing it with parcel owners. In closing, I remind you, remind folks, we are contacting parcel owners as code requires us to do, in order to be able to present to council the HPC proposal for the local Ojai Downtown Historic District. That's all we're asking, is just the opportunity for us to present to council. We must get 50% plus one of the individual owners. Parcel owner nominations are solely to support or oppose the HPC being able to present to council. Once presented, then the process moves to the city council for all decisions after that. Voting and changing your vote is available till the council due date. What we've been told and what we're telling other people. I ask the parcel owners to please support us and allow the council to have this discussion.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Weston, any, any comments on Zoom?
Standby.
Nope. Okay, all right, we'll move on.
No raised hands, he's checking.
Okay.
So he said no.
Okay, all right, move on to discussion, we have a motion?
No, I don't, we don't have a motion yet.
Okay, but you were gonna make one.
No, I don't wanna make one, I want one of them to make it.
Our motion is to recommend a council.
Microphone.
Well, I just had it, I was on a roll there. Consider a recommendation for the Historic Preservation Commission to extend the deadline of nomination forms to be received from November 8th to December 1st.
Can I ask a question about that? So, if we're extending it, we had previously said it was gonna go to come back to council on December 13th? That's the day we're swearing in everybody, and we're making the change, and we have a full agenda already? Can we have this come back to council at the first meeting in January?
No, we wanna make them work from the very beginning.
They're going to be working from the beginning.
I think we should definitely take James's request.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, all right, so.
Is that okay, Brian?
Yes.
Well, the deadline remains the same, the information will be given to staff, it will not be agendized until the second meeting, or the first meeting in January.
Okay, so we have a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye, aye.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Thanks, Brian. We will move on to council member reports. Bill?
You went over your three minutes, you don't get.
One other thing, well, I think I earned this.
We can't reopen, we're not reopening the public.
I've said through all four meetings, congratulations, and thank you for your service.
Ed, I believe my last meeting for a council member report, I'm gonna say four quick things, okay? Number one, I don't know how much to overstate the inspiration of Bill Miley. I mean, if I can call in a public comment to something I care about from a hospital bed after a heart valve, if I could say that in my life, I'm sorry, I just, I'm just kind of, kind of emotional about it. Pretty inspiring. Number two, I'm hearing very good things about the Arundo removal, that the conservancy's been engaged in, they're already seeing, in some cases, a call that I had, told me, that the Arundo removal already is bringing to the surface, water flows to the surface that weren't there before, before the Arundo removal. God, I hope we keep moving on that aggressively. Number three, talked to the fire department earlier today, they're working on that fire hazard we have at the base of Fairway Lane, that I called to their attention, and I really appreciate that response. Fourth, I am not going away, I'm just gonna be off the dais, and one of the things I'm gonna be helping with, I hope, I met with the people that are looking at raising money to do this and take advantage of the agreement with county, is to provide, pro bono my history and skills in doing capital project development for the pickleball project at Soul Park.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else? We're on a council member reports. Nope. Okay, city managers' report?
Just two quick things. One is, we have a disaster council meeting tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. The agenda item on the agenda is to discuss a emergency preparedness drill, which we talked about a lot at both disaster council and at city council meetings recently. And so that is a meeting tomorrow here at council chambers at 10:00 a.m., and we do stream that and post it as well for anybody who wants to catch it later, or make any suggestions about a preparedness drill. Second, I just wanted to report back, at the end of last meeting, I was asked to submit a request to the school district for a joint meeting to discuss how the city could partner with the school district on addressing the Holy Cross, Holy Cross preschool closing. The school district declined the request for a joint meeting at this time, and asked if we could meet after, or indicating they'd prefer to meet after the election. We did remind them that it was about the Holy Cross situation, which is timely, but that is the status of that. I did wanna announce, though, that the city's recreation program is, was able to get a couple of holiday camps up and running, that we're hoping will help people find some daycare options during the holidays when there may be no other options. So we did try to do that very quickly, and we have a few camps up, I think they're available now to register for, so. That is what we were putting together as our immediate response at this point.
Great, thank you, James. Any future agenda items?
I'm sorry.
Future agenda items?
I have one thing. Go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Feingold's suggestion, I thought was.
Hey, that's mine.
An interesting one, and I wondered if maybe that's something we could, since the BAB is having an upcoming meeting, that would be a building code issue? And possibly, we could find some way of, ask them to think of some way that we could, how do we accelerate incentives for gray water use that aren't necessarily triggered by permits, is I think what he was trying to get to.
Yeah, 'cause I always thought like that.
And that seems like it might be something for the BAB to take up, maybe not, but I thought that rather, it might be something, since they have an upcoming meeting, we could at least maybe bring up and get their thoughts on it.
It's also an issue with the plumbing code. The hard part is that, and I absolutely support that, although I don't think either of us are gonna be here to do anything about it, but the, I've done a lot of work on this stuff, and as you know, I do a lot of water-related litigation and attorney stuff. It's really hard to do, to, you can't really enforce it on a, unless, Matt, you know some other way, but you can't, you can't make it a new requirement unless there is a new permit.
Right.
So there.
And I was thinking of, there might be an incentive alternative.
Yeah, I think it'd be great. It's not a lot of water, but you know, the real, the real advanced stuff now is treated gray water, some of the problems in California, the county, the state, are that the plumbing code is not up to speed with what you can do. But on new construction, people are, you know, burying tanks, doing it where it's treated, there's a lot of good stuff. I hate that we're so far behind the curb in California. We love to talk about how technologically advanced and smart we are environmentally, but really, Israel and Australia are so far ahead of us on this, and they really are the cutting edge.
I was thinking of some way we could do something here.
And I agree, I would love to see it built into the city codes in any way we can, and I obviously will continue to advocate at Casitas to make sure that when they're handing out permits, that they're doing as much, you know, restrictive use for that type of stuff as well.
And we can incent, we can incentivize, as we've discussed.
With an appropriate program.
But before sending it to Bev, I think we should put it as a discussion item.
Okay.
So that we can have this conversation, point of sale, there's a lot of different ways that you could encourage doing this in a healthy manner.
I think Susan and I are on the same page here, so.
So, future city council meeting, it sounds like there's a consensus.
Tech council?
Can we buy the future council?
You have the power.
You can put it on the future council.
I'd like to talk about a 400 hotel room in Libby Park.
I was gonna, Mayor, I was gonna say, we're gonna poop-hom, but you and I may not be up here, so that's a good poop-hom.
We'll see what happens. All right, well, I just.
Are you going tomorrow morning to the disaster meeting?
Yes, of course.
Oh, good. I just think if, you know, I'm glad you are, because somebody's gotta be there from our.
Well, Bill will be there also.
Bill? Bill too?
And James will be there.
Okay.
And all council members can attend. Everyone can attend.
All right, well, I'd like to thank everybody for a productive meeting, and we are adjourned.